Good morning, everyone. Thank you all so much for joining us for our Durham County Board of Commissioners work session for this Monday, May 5th. Happy Cinco de Mayo. I will get us started with the public charge. The Board of Commissioners asks its members and citizens and residents to conduct themselves in a respectful courteous manner, both with the Board and fellow residents. At any time, should any member of the Board or any resident fail to observe this public charge, the Chair will ask the offending person to leave the meeting until that individual regains personal control. Should decorum fail to be restored, the Chair will recess the meeting until such time that a genuine commitment to the public charge is observed. Commissioner Burton, would you like to read the land acknowledgement?
Yes, I will. All right. Excuse me. As we convene for the Durham County Commissioners Meeting, it's crucial to recognize the painful truth of history. We stand on the stolen ancestral lands of the Catawba, Ino, Okinichi, Shakori, and Tuscarora peoples, whose deep connection to this land predates our arrival. We acknowledge with humility the injustice placement and violence that occurred, leading to the dispossession of indigenous peoples from their homelands. Their resilience in the face of such adversity is a testament to their strength and spirit. May we humbly honor the ancestors and elders of these nations, both past and present, by committing ourselves to fostering understanding, healing, and justice for all who inhabit this land. Let us walk forward together with open hearts, acknowledging the past and embracing a future guided by compassion, respect, and unity.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton. We now have our resident comments portion. We have four, three, and three people signed up to speak. You want to start with the virtual clerk, Wallace? We have DeWarren Langley joining us virtually. Give us one moment, DeWarren, to pull you up. And then while we wait for that, if Jessica Patrick Taylor and Shawna C. Hamilton want to come to this podium over to my left, you can line up. And you will each have three minutes to speak. DeWarren, if you want to unmute yourself? DeWarren, can you hear us?
I can now. Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners and staff of Durham County. I would first like to start this morning with a moment of silence for the young man that was murdered yesterday in Durham. He was a 16-year-old male of color. So would you please take a moment of silence? Thank you. This morning, I've joined you all just to reemphasize and reiterate the need for Durham County to invest in young people in our community, specifically boys and young men of color. Durham has such a wealth of economic opportunity in terms of jobs that are relocating, companies that are expanding in our area. And in order for these boys and young men to be equipped with the skill, knowledge, and experience to be successful in these possibilities, it requires investment. And for the past 10 years, the Charles Hamilton Houston Foundation has been offering an array of high-impact, consistent programming in Durham. And we would like to welcome Durham County to be our partner in doing this work. No matter how much time that I can volunteer as a citizen utilizing my knowledge, skill, and experience to invest in these boys and young men that we work with, it does take additional resources to expand our capacity and enhance our impact. And so I'm reaching out to you all this morning to begin that conversation so that in the upcoming budget, you all can invite us to be a partner in ensuring that every person in our community, especially those who are overrepresented in suspension, low academic proficiency dropout, and low educational attainment, specifically black boys and young men of color, have the opportunity to have the support, resources, and opportunities that exist in our community. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mr. Langley. Oh, you have to press the button, the button on the right side of the mic. There you go.
Right here? Okay, hi. My name is Jessica Patrick Taylor. I reside here in Durham County, 3111 Hershey Street. I'm here today because last week, my daughter's school, Spring Valley Elementary School, did not have AC for three days. On top of that, they were having school up until 12:30. The teachers, the students who did not, were not at, like me, were not able to take their students to work with them, to not have them sitting in school sweating. Those people still had to suffer through. I read in the news that there was $230 million allocated to Durham Public Schools from the Board of County Commissioners last year, and the same $230 million was allotted. An extra $27 million, it looked like, to make it the same $230 million. And I'm just wondering how you're allocating the same amount of money, which it looked like the budget was about $900 million. There was $230 from the Board of County Commissioners that was allotted. And I was concerned because it seems as though there's a six, I'm sorry, excuse me, an almost $20 million budget shortfall this year, yet the same amount of money was allocated, excuse me, allotted for next year. And I'm also concerned because there's a $16 million sheriff's training facility that you guys approved. And so I'm just concerned that we're creating more of a school-to-prison pipeline because you're not even, the schools are not even making sure that all of the students and staff members have air conditioning. This is simple. This building is well-air-conditioned. So there's a conversation, again, what the gentleman mentioned before, about funding. What do we value in Durham County? You made an opening statement about the land that we sit on. That's, that is powerful and impactful. But there are students, there are staff members, who are part of those same tribes who can't get the decency of just being air-conditioned, in a place that's mandatory for them to be. People are working and students have to learn. They can't learn in these conditions. What I understand is going on now is there's a temporary fix. My question is, when are we going to start having the conversations to make sure that these facilities, if we're not allocating the correct amount of money, that these facilities are actually being taken care of, that the students and the staff here in Durham County, who work very hard, somebody, we need to advocate for them. We need to do more for them.
Hello, my name is Shanice Hamilton. I'm a Durham resident and part of the Have a Heart Coalition. And I'm here today again to demand full expansion of HEART into Durham County because revolutionary safety shouldn't stop at the city lines. We don't want a watered-down version of the co-responder models. We want what actually works here in the city, unarmed, community-based crisis response. HEART has already saved lives and they've proven like just how revolutionary they are with the crisis call diversion, the community response teams, and care navigation. And county residents deserve the same thing. And I'm quite curious why others don't feel like they do. Sheriff Burkhead has acknowledged the HEART's value, and it's now time to act. Our kids like also need real care and not criminalization. Embedding HEART into schools, starting with one elementary, one middle school, and one high school, is like the work that needs to happen right now. And we don't want those funds to come from the funds that are already allocated for DPS. As you can see, those funds need to go somewhere else. And so at 75K, like per position, this is prevention and not punishment. And so we're asking for, again, for you all to respond, to meet with us. Thank you, County Commissioner Burton, for having a conversation with us. And we're looking forward to meeting with the rest of you soon so that we can have these conversations before the budget is set. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, the residents who signed up to speak. We don't have any more? Okay, wonderful. Then we will move on to our consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. We have quite a few items on the consent agenda, and I will read them. And if you have questions, please let us know. I've responded to a few that came up last night. Number one is 250176, the Letter of Support for Application for Clean Water Act, Section The second one is 250177, Approve Membership Agreement Memorandum of Understanding in the Amount of $3,537 with the Clean Water Education Partnership. The next one is 250201, Authorize the County Manager to Execute a Contract with Design Workshop Inc. for Framework Planning Design, Including Community Engagement Services for the Orange Factory Road Nature Preserve and Farm Campus, Totaling an Amount Not to Exceed $295,658.
Commissioner Jacobs?
I just had a quick comment, which I wanted to thank the staff for the very detailed scope of work and the contract, and very excited. And I was just wondering, did we get a tour scheduled yet? Were we able to, do we have that on our calendars yet?
I believe we have dates. We are just going to get a poll from the Board.
Okay, okay, great. Looking forward to that. Thank you.
The next one is 250223. It's an informational item. It's the Page Miami Design District is a staff-initiated zoning map change for the area southeast of Research Triangle Park between North Carolina Highway 54, Davis Drive, Hobson Road, Page Road, and South Miami Boulevard. The proposal also includes a staff-initiated text amendment, both the zoning map change and text amendment, focused on encouraging multimodal transit-oriented development and supporting future publicly-funded transportation projects.
Since these are both consent items but complex, I just, I wanted to ask the planning staff if they could walk us through this item and the next one.
Good morning. My name is Kayla Seibel, Senior Planner with the Durham City-City Planning Department. I can give an overview of the project and then answer any questions. So this is, like was mentioned, a staff-initiated rezoning proposal. It includes amendments to zoning map, the place type map, and a small text amendment. This was initiated, brought up at the Joint City-City Planning Committee by members there interested in zoning that would support future public projects that are along either the railroad in the future or the Triangle Bike Way, and then some of the work that Research Triangle Park is doing for master planning their properties. So this project started with a much larger area, looking at how we can make the zoning more consistent with the place type map. And we held a number of public meetings and worked with individual property owners to increase comfort in the proposal to compact suburban design district. Along the way, we modified our proposal to help alleviate some of the neighbors' concerns on the western part of the on the western part of the study area, and that was presented in October to Planning Commission and received unanimous recommendation for approval. Since that Planning Commission meeting, there was state legislation that affected our ability to change the zoning in many areas without owner consent. So what we had to do was seek property owner consent for the zoning changes, and that's how we ended up with this current proposal. It's 20 properties, many of those properties, or all of them, have projects that folks are interested in pursuing already, so the zoning would help them be able to pursue that. That was presented to City Council last month, April 21st, and received unanimous approval for the rezoning portion, the text amendment portion, and the place type map. So for you all, the text amendment portion is the part that we are seeking approval for, for this district. I think that's a good summary. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, and I really appreciate the staff pivoting on this with the statute from the state legislature that really impacted this. So I really want to applaud you all for literally going out and contacting every single property owner and getting some approval and us moving forward. And hopefully, the other property owners will see great things happening, and they'll want to come on board, too. This is a really important area that is, as you mentioned in the reports, prime for transit-oriented development, you know, with all the investments happening there, and also for denser development because of the environmental conditions and right next to RTP. So I just really want to applaud you all for being creative, and maybe there'll even be a fix that comes up in this, while the, while the state legislature is in session. But anyway, again, I appreciate you all, thank you.
Commissioner Valentine, did you have a question? Oh, yeah, okay.
Good morning, my name is Robin Schultz, Principal Planner and Arbors within the Planning Department. Great to be here with you all this morning, just to talk about the privately-initiated text amendment, TC 240003. Essentially what this is, is there's a process called a statutory development agreement in which a developer and either the city or county can come to an agreement on essentially what is to be developed, and in that process, there's flexibility to be provided in exchange for some amount of community benefit to be decided upon by those parties. And so within the current UDO, it does not allow you to make changes to tree coverage. An applicant came through with a case that wished to do that, so through that, they also did a text amendment to change that, so that you can make those shifts to tree coverage through a statutory development agreement. Though I did just want to say, this doesn't change anything for by-right development, rezonings, et cetera. This has to go through a statutory development agreement, which requires a neighborhood meeting, a public hearing, and an approval from the appropriate governing body each and every And that was unanimously approved at council on April 21st. And I'm available for any questions.
Well, thank you. And here, I think it's important that this is related to development agreements. So I know there was good discussion, the Planning Commission comments, I think, helped to highlight this issue, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Manager?
Okay, great. I need to go back to page five in my reading, I skipped one by mistake. This is 250211, this is to authorize County Manager to execute a contract amendment for the radio tower design services in the amount of $136,304 with O'Brien Atkins Architects for total revised contract amount not to exceed $4,956,814 for the Emergency Operations Center. The next one, I'm sorry.
That's all right. No, I just had a question. Is this for the operations center that's supposed to go on Broad Street? Or, I'm trying to...
Yes, and Dwayne? I'm sorry. I called the wrong name, my apologies, but Dwayne, you can handle that.
Good morning, Dwayne Branson, Assistant County Manager. This is for the up-and-coming EOC that we are attempting to build. For more information, Mr. Manz is in the back here, if you have additional questions about the design of it.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure I was, you know...
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Perry Manz, Deputy Director, County Engineering. It is the new location that's gonna replace the existing EOC on Broad Street, so, yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Branson. Thank you, Perry.
Okay, we're back on page eight. The next one is 250225, Approval of the Fiscal Year 25 Durham Transit Plan, Quarter Four Work Program Amendment in the Amount of $158,000.
Commissioner Valentine?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just so that I'm clear, so the amount that's being requested here, is that to keep the ridership free for the remainder?
Yes, and Brandy Minor, can you also expand on this?
I might add that there's a lot of interest in the community about ridership remaining cost-free for any of our residents, and so I'm just curious if that's what this is attempting to do.
I'm Ellen Beckman, Transportation Director. So this amendment is specifically for Go Triangle, who has returned to fairs last year. And they have a program that was called the Low Income Fair Program, now it's called Transit Assistance Program, that offers free passes to eligible riders. So this is to increase the amount of funding for that program, because they've had more uptake than originally planned, and to change it so it's based on the ridership amount, like, the number of people using it. So this, this just has to do with Go Triangle, it doesn't have anything to do with the city of Durham, in terms of what's the recommended amendment.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
The next item is 250248. This is Approval of Durham County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Local Funding Plan Recommendations for Fiscal Year 2526. The next one is 250249. This is Approval to Allow the County Manager to Enter Into a Service Contract with Sunland Fire Protection, Inc. to Remove and Install New Fire Pump and Control Panel at the Durham County Detention Center in the Amount of $266,985.
Commissioner Branson?
Thanks, Chair Alon. I have a question, because I'm noticing, like, since I've been on the commission, the Board of Commissioners, we've been getting a lot of consent agenda items around the jail. And I was wondering, is it possible that we can get a tour of the jail?
Absolutely.
Because it seems like there are a lot of issues surrounding the jail, so I want a lot of, lot of building conditions and things like that.
We can definitely coordinate tours. Part of, as you know, with your orientation, we've been coordinating different site visits. The Detention Center is nearly 30 years old, and it has a 24/7 utilization, so it never gets a break. And in our buildings that are, have high usage, we do come back on a, probably a more frequent basis for repairs, but we definitely can coordinate those tours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is 250250. This is to allow the County Manager to enter a contract with Pipe Text Plumbing LLC to remove and install backflow preventers to the Durham County Detention Center in the amount of $122,359. The next one is 250252. This is a transfer of $18,000 between ARPA awards from Knox Street Studios to Fort Cities to provide additional small business counseling services. Okay, Commissioners, this concludes our consent agenda items.
Thank you, Manager Hager. We'll now begin our discussion items. We have a lot on our agenda today, so gonna be very strict with the time for everyone. We're gonna begin with 25-0142, Presentation from Urban Ministries of Durham. And we have 30 minutes allocated for this, so we'll have 20 minutes for presentation and then 10 minutes for questions from the board. And please make sure, when you come up for your presentation, to turn your mic on when you're speaking, and bring the mic as close as possible to you. Thank you.
So, good morning. My name is Sheldon Mitchell, I'm the Executive Director of Urban Ministries of Durham. We are glad to have this opportunity to share some update with you all today about our operations, as well as about a proposed collaborative impact project that we've been working on. Before we get into that, I'd also like for my other two members here to introduce themselves.
All right, so I'm Brandy Thompson, I am a principal and architect at Clearscapes in Raleigh, North Carolina.
I'm Newman Aguirre, I was past Chair of the Board of Directors at Urban Ministries and currently Chair of the Building Committee.
And also, we definitely have some supporters, other service partners, and key stakeholders that have been working with us on the collaborative project, and I'd like for them just to stand, to be recognized at this moment. Cool. Great, thank you. So one of the things that we definitely understand and know is that there's not a one organization or institution that's able to do all the things required to end and stop homelessness. So that's one of the things that Urban Ministries, we definitely work in a collaborative nature with a host of organizations across this community to be able to effectively meet the needs of those who are unhoused in our community. And we're just excited to be able to be a lead partner as we look at bringing forth a collaborative impact solution that we expect to be able to make significant impact in this area. We also, as we look at the counties on the DC Forward Plan, we feel like we have lots of alignment, not only with the work of Urban Ministries, but also of our other service partners who work in each and every day in community to impact this population. We are providing emergency shelter, we're helping to reduce barriers as relates to housing and employment, we're providing food assistance and other interventions to emergency response, as well as other preventative applications and services that are provided by a host of our collaborating partners. Again, so as we look at ourselves, just across the spectrum of our local continuum of housing and homeless services that are provided, we're touching definitely from prevention to emergency, all the way through to housing for those who are ending their homelessness. Again, you should see the illustration that it takes many partners to be able to effectively serve those who are in need in our community, whether it be medical care, as we think about our partners who are providing care through Lincoln at the healthcare clinic for the homelessness, to shelters, all the way up to housing, as we have a number of housing partners who are providing rapid rehousing, on through permanent supportive housing, and other housing solutions to those in need in our community. And as we look and think about the things that are needed and additional services to be provided, we know that, again, it just, it takes a collaborative of partners to be able to effectively deliver those services and meet those needs that exist in our community. At Urban Ministries, this just goes to really further validate the fact that we are working to connect with the community, work with a number of partners as we strive toward our mission of ending homelessness and fighting poverty. We're doing that through offering food, shelter, and a future to our neighbors in need, and each year, we're impacting and serving more than 6,000 individuals across our community with those various services. Just to highlight a few of those things, from the emergency shelter side, last year, we housed 588 individuals through the emergency shelter. Through that, there were 300 positive exits into housing, and 95 of those being permanent. That's one of the things that's definitely concerning to us, as we look at moving forward as an organization. In the past, the individuals moving into permanent housing really was closer to approaching 300, and this had a steady decline, really, ever since 1819. So we're definitely concerned about that. At the same time, through our Community Resource Center, we're also offering additional supplemental services that really help individuals and families to be able to leverage their limited resources. So that comes in the form of the Community Cafe, where we're providing three meals a day, 365 days a year, to anyone in the community who is hungry and desires a meal. Last year, you can see almost 239,000 meals were provided, as well as through the Resource Center, we have the food pantry and the clothing closet, and those, again, are supplemental supports to households and households and families. And we average about 548 households each month that are being able to extend and leverage their limited resources through those options. So one of the things that we know quite well is that the services that we're providing are very impactful to those individuals who are in the midst of crisis. We're meeting them where they are, not really judging people, but just trying to look how we can best come alongside of them and support them to help them through their immediate crisis. That happens in a number of ways with supportive services, but ultimately, we're trying to provide housing stability, health outcomes, better health outcomes, employment outcomes, and opportunities for them. Urban Ministries is not only doing that by ourselves, again, but our host of partners who are represented here today, as well as others who are not, who are working hard each and every day to best serve this population. So at the same time, we know that there are really benefits to the individual as they go through and receive services and are assisted, we also realize that there are benefits and savings to the community. As we look at some of the research, we've seen a range anywhere from 35,000 to 50,000 mentioned as cost to communities for each homeless person within a community. But we know that through asserted and collaborative services that can be provided, really to help support those individuals and end their homelessness, that there can be savings that can be realized for communities. As we think about the reduction in the usage, whether it be the criminal justice system, whether it be to the healthcare system, or other supportive services throughout the community that may currently be more heavily used because there are more homeless people in community. So we not only want to be able to... So, we not only want to be able to better impact those individuals on a personal level, but also the benefits that can be received to the entire community, definitely resulting in a better quality life for everyone. So, we know that Durham is not in this alone. We see factors going across the nation. So, this is definitely not a unique situation to us. As we look at the national landscape, many of the figures that we see, that homeless counts are up. We see that, you know, costs are rising, and many of the gains that have come before are beginning to decline. We know that with the current climate from the federal level, that funding is being either reduced or eliminated in a number of ways, which further escalate the declines and the drawback on gains that have been made. And as we look at ourselves just here locally, this shows, I think, the pit count as of twenty-twenty-four. And one of the things that really jumped out to me that was really most concerning, the first time I saw this, was the fact that our unsheltered count really has more than doubled in less than five years. And as we think about these numbers, we know that this is the best effort to count on that particular evening. And we can definitely apply a multiple to these to know that there are many more who are not counted. As we travel about our community, I know that we see those things being quite evident at different intersections. We see different encampments that may exist throughout and across the community that put faces to these numbers that we see. So, as a result of this, we know that not only Urban Ministries, but all of our service partners across the community really are being stretched. With the increases that we see, with the waiting lists that continue to grow, and with other resources and funding that's being reduced across the community. We, again, just know that expenses are up. We know that numbers are up and rising. And then, we also know that support, unfortunately, is declining in many aspects. So, partners make a lot of tough choices to try to figure out how we can continue to best respond to meet and serve individuals in the midst of their crisis. So, in particular, we look at things at Urban Ministries, again, knowing that revenues are funding being down, expenses rising as we see and attempt to meet the needs of this population. We know and understand that the climate is definitely a challenging one at the moment. So, we're looking to see what are things that we can do to reduce our costs? What are things that we can do to be able to look for, diversify our new funding options to support the work? Yet and still, we very much look to and need the support that we receive from Durham County. We're definitely appreciative of the support that's provided, typically on an annual basis. That represents for us typically about ten percent of our budget each year. We definitely have a request in now for funding to be considered in this year's twenty-five-twenty-six request, which would represent what we would see to be about sixteen percent of our anticipated budget for twenty-five-twenty-six. You just see there on the metric, all of our metrics of service have been increasing pretty steadily and consistently over the past few years. And we know that in order for us to be able to meet that need of those who are coming to our doorstep in the midst of crisis, we definitely will have to have increased support from the community. And hopefully, you all would consider increased support from the county as well. So, talked a little bit about just our services, what we provide, how we're currently trying to address this issue and approach this problem. But we also saw that the problem is growing. And how do we prepare ourselves to meet today's problem, as well as the future of this issue within our community? One of the things that was really, I guess, inspiring to me, this happened back in twenty-twenty, when Saint Phillips Episcopal Church really approached Urban Ministries to say that they had been in a time of deep study, envisioning work to see how their church can further live out their faith, how they can be more impactful for those in need in our community. And they approached us about really looking to see how they could better support, not only just UMD, but other service providers who are working to serve the unhoused in our community. And that led us to begin to explore and really to think about what could be possible. And as we began to talk to different partners, different providers within our community and our network, we really came to the understanding that a collaborative impact project would be, the idea could be the resource that could help us effectively address this issue as we think about capacity, as we think about services that are needed, as we think about gaps, really as we think about effectiveness and better collaboration amongst our system. And so, we're gonna go into talking a little more about what a collaborative impact homeless services center looks like in our minds at this time.
All right. So, as I think we all understand, shelter services are really on the front line of this emergency that is the housing crisis, both nationally and here in Durham. Yet, the current facilities really limit the ability for service providers to provide adequate care. And this new collaborative, purpose-built facility is really urgently needed. And it's one that expands access to a broad range of services in a single location. And it's guided by trauma-informed and human-centered design principles. And I think we all understand at an intrinsic level that the way that care is provided in a shelter environment can either really compound the trauma experienced by individuals or help to ease it. And the physical environment plays a critical role in that experience. So, to foster healing, shelters must offer safe spaces that support residents an opportunity to heal physically, emotionally, and psychologically, and really guide them towards well-being, while also connecting them to a broader community. Trauma-informed design in shelter facilities has been shown to significantly improve outcomes, not only for the individuals, but also for the broader community. And benefits include shorter shelter stays, lower rates of return to homelessness, greater housing readiness, improved academic performance in children, and increased employment readiness. And these outcomes not only impact and really help the individual, but also really help the community and save the community money. So, while the need is great, we have worked to quantify it so that a measured solution could be brought forward. So, shelters are currently overwhelmed. And what we know is that waitlists currently exceed capacity by three to four times. And that's of the people who are actively seeking shelter. And as Sheldon mentioned earlier, there are many who are not actively seeking shelter. So, this is, again, just a snapshot of the dire situation. So, to address the gap, non-congregate shelter options for three hundred men, women, and children are desperately needed. In addition, expanded day services are essential to provide access to basic sanitation, support services, and pathways to rapid rehousing to those who are living unsheltered. And our community is also seeing a rise in the severity of mental health conditions, substance use disorders, and chronic physical health conditions. And expanded clinic services are needed, including pediatric care and medical respite. And all of that is needed really in a single facility. So, to help prevent the growing number of cost-burdening individuals and families from falling into homelessness, an expanded low-income support services are needed. Increased access to food and meals is critical, as is access to clothing, diapers, and other basic household needs. And across the country, communities are putting into place these collaborative models to really respond to the growing housing crisis. And this brings together shelter, healthcare, mental services, meals, and other critical support infrastructure in one place. And this really surrounds residents with coordinated, low-barrier, trauma-informed care. And these models have demonstrated to improve outcomes and increase housing readiness. So, again, as Sheldon mentioned, a few years ago, Saint Phillips approached Urban Ministries with an opportunity to pursue a purpose-built collaborative facility on their property. And that's an enormous gift, because many communities are not open to really receive a housing solution that is aimed to help homelessness. And so, it's just a gift that we're grateful for. And since then, since then, we've worked to develop a program to meet the needs identified in the community. And we've determined that around ninety thousand square foot is really what it's gonna take to address the gaps in the system currently. And on the point-eight acre site that is available through Saint Phillips, this really yields a six-story structure. So, a limited footprint forces a more vertical type of construction, and it's considered high-rise construction. Unfortunately, high-rise construction is more expensive than low-rise construction. You know, I think we are certainly open to the potential for other sites that would allow a facility to build in a low-rise setting, which would save significant cost. But the Saint Phillips site is the site that we have at hand, and we're excited to move forward with a solution there. And we're very much in the early stages of design on this project. And so, there's lots of flexibility to add partners, to add the needs that are addressed in the facility. And we're also thinking about the facility itself as we think about design for it, that each space needs to be designed with flexibility in mind, so that as the community's needs change over time, the facility can morph and adjust to meet those needs where they are.
We are at time, but if, I'll give five minutes to just run through the last few slides so we can get to questions.
As our community confronted COVID-nineteen, we learned a lot about our inadequacies in caring for our most vulnerable neighbors. It laid bare the problems associated with congregate living and the huge gaps in our continuum of care necessary to support our efforts to quickly move our unhoused back to permanent housing. We also learned a lot of positive lessons about collaboration and how we could work together with our service partners to create a solution that can eliminate the barriers and develop more sustainable pathways to effectively transition those confronting homelessness and support them through their journey back to permanent housing. Together with our service partners, who each contribute their unique expertise, we envisioned what the solution might look like and invested in creating a framework for the collaborative impact project for a future homeless services center. Thanks to the incredible generosity of Saint Phillips Episcopal Church, we have a site on which we can build this new facility with a human-centered approach without disrupting our current services and in close proximity to our human services complex. We are all aware of the huge barriers, particularly lack of transportation, can cause in derailing the efforts of homeless to successfully access existing services. And this location, because of its proximity, it really brings all of this together. With the assistance of our design partner, Clearscapes, we evaluated similar projects across the country to learn from their successes and failures. Two years ago, we presented the design concept to the Joint City County Committee. There were some concerns about the price tag for this project, so we evaluated alternate sites with the goal of reducing cost. We have shown you what savings are possible. But we're also keenly aware that community members often oppose sites over concerns about potential negative impacts of placing such a facility in their neighborhood. From its inception, this project has been developed as a community solution, and we are committed to finding community funding options to support its development. UMD invested in a financial feasibility study that verified strong community support and the ability to generate about ten to twelve million from a capital campaign. We are thankful for the support we have received from this body and are very appreciative of the county manager for including this vital project as a line item in the Durham County Capital Improvement Plan. As part of the financial feasibility study, participants confirmed their belief that this project is needed in Durham and are willing to contribute to a future campaign. Much of their willingness to contribute is contingent upon the commitment of public funding. This project is vital to both the county and city, and we look forward to seeing significant funding support to cover seventy-five percent of the project costs. We recognize the significant challenges you are contending with and all of the competing items of priority with very limited funding. The chaos created by our national leaders has ripped apart the fundamental systems that support our community and are devastating the lives of so many individuals and families in Durham. Sheldon has shared with you earlier the impact we are already seeing as the demands for our services have increased. We are also seeing significant concerns around safety, particularly in downtown Durham, related to our unhoused population. Without any option for day services, we currently have no effective way to mitigate these problems. Law enforcement tends to become the de facto option in most communities. Law enforcement is not only the wrong solution, it is also the most expensive application of resources and lacks the capacity to address these issues. The need for this collaborative impact project is urgent and can't be overstated. Consider if our community had this multi-services center today, with its units able to host over three hundred individuals and families, comprehensive day services, outreach services, and all of the other services that this project will bring to the community. Imagine how much better we would have been able to serve and deal with the issues that we are currently facing. These are difficult times, and we ask you to prioritize this project and allocate three million dollars to support the pre-development costs and the initial design phase, so that we can move forward with urgency to benefit from this vital resource in our community to support the most vulnerable individuals and families in Durham. Thank you.
Thank you all so much and for all of your work in this very detailed presentation. I know I've gotten to sit down with you all also one-on-one. And I know we have new board members that I'm sure would be willing and interested to have those more in-depth conversations personally as well. I'll bring it to the board to see if there's questions. Commissioner Burton?
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. I think more or less, and I appreciate you bringing this to the county commission, like Chair Long said, I'm a new board member, so I don't really have a really good understanding of all the dynamics that are in play with regards to the shelter, all of that, things like that. So, I think it's gonna be important that I have a sit-down conversation with you. You can show me around so I can see what's happening. I think one of the things, as I was listening to the presentation and coming from the public schools, I taught thirty years. And we just had a parent from the school where I formally taught, right? For nine years, talking about the conditions of the schools, things like that. And then, I see one of my former colleagues, Xavier Kason, from the DPS Foundation. And I kind of somehow figuring out, how do we all get all on the same page? Because we have these things going on in the schools, trying to deal with children who are going through housing security. We're trying to do a community schools program within the schools. And you have this group doing this thing, and this group doing this thing. So, I think it's gonna be important for me, and maybe some, you know, Commissioner Valentine, Commissioner Lee, just sitting down, talking about all the things that are happening, so we can kind of coordinate efforts, right? Because there's a lot going on. And I think sometimes, we're doing this thing in these silos. So, that's my first comment. And then, yeah, just really wanted to talk more about what's happening with, you know, people who are unsheltered. What are some of the issues? So, we can really solve this issue of people being homeless and living. Because it's concerning to me. I've been living in Durham for thirty-four years, and I'm seeing more and more people sleeping on the street. I've never seen that in Durham, and I'm seeing that more and more and figuring out how do we solve that problem. So, I appreciate you presenting, and I look forward to meeting to discuss more about what's happening. So, thank you.
Commissioner Valentine?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your presentation today. And I would agree that the unhoused, particularly here in Durham County, is a major problem that we all face. You had mentioned that there were ninety-five, I guess, individuals that received services at Urban Ministries. individuals that received services at Urban Ministries that actually get into a situation where they have a permanent housing. I'm curious to know, what's your actual goal with regard to the number of people that you serve? And so you gave us the number of 95, but what's your actual goal?
So typically, we have a goal of 150. You know, I mentioned about the 18, 19. You know, those goals were definitely rising. In that time period, our goal was 275. And as we've seen it become more difficult and lesser resources, unfortunately, we've had to reduce the expectations that we're going to be able to actually get that number of people into a permanent housing situation. And now really having a lot of additional focus on just trying to get them into a positive housing exit. But typically, 150.
And my final question, just in the best interest of time. I know that you have a partnership with the VA. How do you leverage that partnership in the work that you do?
So I think that's a great example. So one of the things, and I'm just going to reference Mr. Bob, who's the VA worker. He typically comes-
A good friend, Bob Williamson.
Yeah, so he typically comes during breakfast. He's there helping to, you know, just serve coffee and build relationships. But then he works the room to make people know of his presence and also the resources that might be available and how they can be assisted through the VA. And that's something he's done. I know before I got there and ever since I've been, and that's been a good partnership and really a collaborative connect for them to come in and engage with the residents in those seeking services and then assist them.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell, and I look forward to continued discussions. Thank you.
Commissioner Jacob?
Thank you. Thank you all for this. This is, I really appreciate the summarized nature of your presentation and the data that you included in there. It's really important as we're making these decisions. I'm really curious about the, so the location that we're talking about now is the, you know, the one right up the street here, which is the estimated $50 million, right? You said it'd be more, I get that. With an alternative site, it's 30 million. That's at the low end, there's a $20 million difference. Have you all found another lo- is there another location that you all, you've seen as an alternative? Have you looked somewhere else, you know, for an alternative site? That's a big difference, right? And I'm not saying that I don't support that. I'm just looking at the different options as we look at commitments this would take. This obviously wouldn't happen in one budget cycle or maybe even not even in one bond. But $50 million is a pretty high hill to climb, right? I support it. I absolutely believe this is integral to making Durham the place we believe it should be. I'm just curious about the alternatives, if there has been an effort to look for alternative locations, given the price, the cost.
So one of the things that we started doing is really just trying to have conversations with partners and others to try to look for alternative sites. There is not a site identified at this particular point in time. But we do know that, as we think about proximity to other services, as we think about some of the features that an additional site would need to have, you know, those things are in mind as we look at potential options because we realize, yes, savings, if we can achieve those things and still provide the same type of services and the same type of access to that population, we definitely would want to consider that strongly.
I'd be curious to know if, as an example, if DPS has any land banked. We, I mean, we have properties that in no foreseeable future that there would be a school built. But it's just land that's been banked over time. I do believe that, I do agree with the proximity of the services and transportation, you know, transit, all of those sorts of things. That is absolutely the most ideal place. I'm just curious if there's, if DPS has any land nearby that may be banked. That's something I would love to follow up on.
And I think Commissioner Jacobs had requested, not particularly for this, but overall, questions she's asked about what is the land? We've been moving schools-
Right.
And an assessment of all the land we own, all the land DPS owns, all the land the city owns, and how we can best utilize this already publicly-owned land.
Right.
And then I think Commissioner Jacobs has questions.
But thank you, but thank you all. I really appreciate you all being here.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for everyone for being here. I feel like the whole village is here. So, and that's what's so important is because this is a system that we are talking about. And we have many, many, to Commissioner Burton's point of wanting to understand what is our current system is very important because it, we do have a system in Durham and very valuable partners, many who are sitting here today. So I want to thank all of you. I just want to quickly respond to Vice Chair Dr. Lee's comment. I mean, we have publicly-owned land to look at. The city has surface parking lots downtown that could be redeveloped. I mean, we have the former Boys and Girls Club that's not far from downtown, which I believe is at least two acres. So there are definitely sites that we could look at. So let me just first say that we know we need a day center. We know that we need more different, we need more housing for people, all different types of housing. But we've also had a lot of solutions to come forward in the short term. And then we know there are investments we need to make desperately for the long term. I sit as the county liaison to the Homeless Services Advisory Committee. I am our liaison to the Joint City-City-Durham Public School Housing Task Force that is working right now. I've been participating in the Pre-Shelter Housing Committee. And I also chair the Familiar Faces Initiative, which is zeroing in on Rochanna Parker with Justice Services and Ryan Smith with HART, and now soon-to-be community safety for, well, community safety, but more for the city of Durham, are leading a Familiar Faces pilot that focuses on the most severely ill people who are unhoused. So one good piece of good news to share with what Commissioner Burton was saying is that there is a proposal to do a strategic plan around our homeless population, and we've never done this in Durham. And this is a very important step that I think will also really help guide the plans for facilities. And that, I'd hope that's going to come to the city and county during our budget work session. So I am going to, I'm making a request here, and I'm looking at Samantha Smith, because she's our brilliant guru on housing, that during our budget work session, we could hear about some of the short-term investments that we have numerous proposals about. I'm looking at Tasha Melvin from Families Moving Forward about the need for a fund to help people pay arrears for housing. You know, there are people waiting to get into housing. We've run out of money for the fund to pay for buses, to get people on their way, for some additional respite care. There are things that we can do right now. So I just want to be very clear. We know about these long-term investments, but I would, I'm requesting that we hear about some of the short-term proposals that are going to help us move, you know, we've got to address some short-term needs and then the long term. I also would like to hear the proposal that you, Sheldon, put together with Open Table Ministries, thank you, for a pilot day center. We can't wait until this building gets built. We need, you came up with a great proposal for a pilot, and I would like our board to hear that proposal for consideration in this year's budget. We know, we need that as, to get started and see what we could do. So, and then I guess related to, and then there was also a pilot in there about for pallet homes, which I think we need to hear because we're really lacking some of the housing for those who just maybe 10 to 15 people that we've identified in the Familiar Faces Initiative that need some immediate help, those who are severely ill. So if we could hear, the board hear those. But I just want to say, I would like to understand more about the $3 million request for the planning process because I would like to see a breakdown of that. Maybe the manager and Perry could speak. I don't know how much, you know, we do some very big capital projects on the county end, and that just sounds very high to me. And as you know, with constrained budgets, we've got to be very, very cost-effective. And to Vice Chair Lee's point about looking at how we can do this most cost-effectively. And I think it's going to be really important that we hear from the city about what a cost share for this project. And even for this year's budget, are you also asking the city for an increase as well for the operating budget for the shelter?
So we don't receive direct allocation from the city. We do receive CDBG funding through the process. But outside of that, we don't receive direct funding towards our operating budget from the city.
Okay. I think it would be helpful to see a breakdown of the budget and who contributes what with capital and operating. That would be great. Let me see. Also, I wanted to mention, first of all, St. Phillips, you're amazing. Thank you. Amazing. And the ARPA funding, we have allocated $2 million. You mentioned in the presentation about the importance of the street outreach. I know HART has done an amazing job with street outreach. Housing for New Hope is moving away from that. But we have allocated the county $2 million for medical street outreach. So hopefully that is an investment that will help. So anyway, look forward to next steps on both the long-term and the short-term investments with you all. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. The next presentation we have is the presentation on HART Framework and De-escalation Practices. We have 45 minutes allocated to that. Ryan, do you think 30 minutes presentation, 15 question? 25 and 20? Okay. 25 for presentation, 20 for questions. Perfect. No, you got to press it. There you go.
All right. And will the slides come up? There we go, perfect. Good morning, Chair Alom, Vice Chair Lee, Commissioners, Madam Manager. My name is Ryan Smith. I'm the Director of the City of Durham's Community Safety Department. I've been the Director of that department since it was created in 2021, and it's a privilege to be here with you today. My goal in this presentation is, I know we have some new commissioners. I want to provide background on how the department was created, an explanation of what the HART framework is. I'll give you an update on how things are going in our third year of operations. And then leave plenty of time for questions. Next slide, please. Ah, thank you. I'm also joined today by Lee Mazur. Lee is one of our clinical managers. We have two clinical managers in the department. The other is Abin Abadiaco. So our department was created in July of 2021. It was created to be a new branch of public safety. So in terms of the structure within the city of Durham, Community Safety Department has reports up to the same deputy city manager that our police chief, our fire chief, and the head of our emergency communication reports to. I'm going to give you background on all the things that led to the formation of our department and what is called HART. So first, let me talk about what led to the creation of our department. So our department was created as a recommendation by our former city manager, Wanda Page, with unanimous support by city council. But the work that went into that decision started almost a year earlier. So a year prior to the creation of our department, former city manager Tom Bonfield reached out to RTI following the murder of George Floyd and worked with RTI to conduct an analysis of 911 calls in Durham. So RTI partnered with us, and then we ended up forming a coalition with other North Carolina cities to understand why people call 911. We looked at three years of call data in Durham. RTI did an analysis of all the different call natures, why people call, what are the outcomes of those calls. They did a use-of-force analysis. They surveyed law enforcement. They did a high-level scan of ways other cities across the country were beginning to respond to some of these calls. All of those findings were, are still available and can be shared with you. They were presented to city council, and manager Page looked at that analysis and made a determination based on it to create a new department. And I think at the high level of that analysis, what you find is people call 911, as you know, for a whole bunch of reasons. And it is obvious that we need police, fire, and EMS for some of those calls. But it is also true that there are a lot of calls that we have historically relied on law enforcement that we don't necessarily need to. Calls that could be answered by different kinds of responders. And so the city of Durham's approach has been to really broaden and diversify the types of first responders we have so that we can best match the needs of people in crisis. The development of a fourth branch so that we can, it's like to say, we have, we've historically had sorting issues. We only have, we've only had three buckets to sort calls into. If your house is on fire, it's obvious we want to sort that into the fire bucket. If you're experiencing cardiac arrest, it's obvious that 911 call needs to be sorted into EMS. If there are shots fired, someone has broken into your home, it is obvious that we need to sort that call into law enforcement. But people call for a whole range of other reasons because they're desperate, they don't know where else to turn, they're lonely, they're experiencing suicidal ideation. They are a single mother who doesn't know where to turn for food for her children. There's just a whole bunch of reasons that people call 911. And the development of our department is giving us additional responders to send to some of those calls that we don't need law enforcement for and also giving us additional resources to deploy with law enforcement, which I'll talk more about. So following the work by RTI, the city manager made a recommendation, and our department was created in July of 2021. In our first year, our department had 13 staff. I was the first employee of the department and then had 12 vacancies to fill. Our goal by the end of that first year was to be doing work in the community. And I want to lay out for you at a high level the steps we took in that very first year of existence that would lead to the creation of the HART program. We took 11 months to carefully plan because we wanted to do this well. And that planning had four major components. So the first is that we took time to listen and engage with members across the Durham community. We held multiple town halls, we held workshops in neighborhoods, really to understand what people's hopes for, for this work, what values they wanted centered, what types of calls they hoped we'd have different types of responders show up for, what types of training they wanted responders to have, and a variety of other things that really went in to help shape and inform some of the design of HART. The second pillar of that work was close collaboration with other public safety partners and with behavioral health partners. So we formed a multi-agency planning group. We met with that group weekly for months in the fall and winter that included representatives from the police department, emergency communications, local behavioral health providers, and others listed up there. Those were opportunities for us to learn together. So we would have virtual calls with other cities who were doing this work. We would explore our own data. We would share the calls we were thinking about responding to with these new responders. We would understand the concerns that other public safety partners had and develop plans to mitigate those responses. The third thing is that we have always been a data-informed department. We've, we continue to learn as much as we could from the existing call data that we had because a critical question is if you're going to start sending social workers and others to calls that you used to send police to, where are you going to start? And so we- And so, we, we looked at all the data that we had to understand, what are the, what are the various risk factors we can see in 911 calls? How often are responders being injured? How often is use of force occurring on particular calls? How often are arrests occurring on calls? All of those things, as well as conversations with law enforcement, as well as data from other cities, went into helping us determine which calls were we going to send responders to without police, which calls were we going to add responders along with police to, and I'll talk more about that, but data was a really critical piece. Finally, we took time in those first 11 months to learn from other cities. Durham was not the first city to, to develop an alternative response program like ours and other cities were very generous. We learned from Albuquerque, Austin, Denver, San Francisco, and others. And in that, we asked for all the data. What calls are you, what calls are you now sending social workers to that you used to send law enforcement to? What can you tell us about those calls? How often are you having to request emergency police backup on the calls? Has anyone ever been injured on those calls? All of that data was really critical and helped build our confidence that we were making the right decisions locally, and I would say confidence that has borne out in the stats that we see in our program. But that learning from other cities was really critical. So, these four things really went into designing HART. We would present to council after about six months of research and then we'd take the next five months to integrate into 911, to hire staff, to train staff, and to be ready to go. This is just an example of some of the values that emerged in our conversations with community members, things that were really important to center in the HART program, an approach that would be committed to harm reduction, an approach that was accessible and inclusive, that provided reliable and predictable responses for residents, and responders that were familiar with Durham, familiar with the types of crises they would be responding to, and were able to be empathetic. We have a report on our website, and I'm happy to share with you, that shares a lot of other things that we learned through our conversations with community. But all of that work led to the formation of HART. In its beginning, HART has been a program with four different kinds of responses, and the goal of it is to make sure that we're able to connect people experiencing crises with the right care and response. And there are, that begins from the moment someone calls 911 to the in-person responses that we send out in the community through 911, to the follow-up care we provide in the month following that 911 call. So, I will explain, or lay out for you the, the four different programs. Crisis Call Diversion is what happens in the call center. We have two different kinds of in-person response. We have our community response teams that respond to calls that we used to send law enforcement to that we do not any longer. We have co-response teams that respond jointly with law enforcement. And then after a 911 call, we have teams that are dedicated to following up with people. We call that Care Navigation. So, Crisis Call Diversion, so this is, we embed in our 911 call center, in the city's 911 call center, licensed clinical social workers. Telecommunicators always answer every call, but if it is a first or second, second person mental health crisis, so let's say it's someone who themselves is experiencing suicidal ideation, or they're with a family member or loved one who is, that call can be immediately transferred to a licensed mental health professional who is able to help better assess the call over the phone. To provide support over the phone, we're able to divert about 60% of the calls that go to that program from any in-person response by virtue of having mental health professionals in the call center. Because not every call needs a first-person response if we have people with the right professional training there to make an assessment and connect people with other appropriate care. If someone calls and it's suicidal ideation and they have a weapon in their hand, we are going to immediately send law enforcement and co-response if it is available. We will not delay it. But we also have the benefit of having a mental health professional in the call center that can remain on the phone with that person while other help is on the way, and that's really helpful. It provides our first responders with additional information by virtue of the kinds of questions that our clinicians can ask. It gives us a better chance of de-escalating that situation and convincing someone to put a weapon away prior to first responders arriving, so there's lots of benefits that come from having clinicians in our 911 call center. Additionally, our clinicians in the call center are able to do something that 911 centers typically are not staffed to do, and that's to provide follow-up calls. You know, our, our, all of our call centers deal with staffing shortages, we are prioritizing their availability to be there when that first 911 call comes in. But now that we have clinicians in the call center, we have some extra capacity and they can follow up on particular kinds of calls to check in, to make sure, see how someone is doing, to make sure they're aware of other resources in the community. And that type of follow-up care is an important part of Crisis Call Diversion, and I think it creates a, a 911 call system that is even more caring, and I think it's a lovely thing that we're able to do. So, you can see the top calls that we handle through the rest again are calls that we can be diverted through a mental health professional, mental health crisis calls and suicide threat. And the number is, just to orient you to the slide, that number is how many calls Crisis Call Diversion has answered in the first two and a half years of operation. We have three total staff doing this. Operate seven days a week, 12 hours a day from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM right now. The second program we have is community response teams. I think this is the thing that HART probably is most known for, but it's just one of four things that we do. Community response teams are employ licensed clinical social workers, peer support specialists, and EMTs. These teams go to calls that we used to send law enforcement to, that we no longer send law enforcement to as a first response, if these units are available. They go to a wide range of calls, from trespass calls to mental health crisis with no weapon involved, to suicide threat with no weapon, to welfare checks, to calls involving intoxicated persons that wouldn't be routed to EMS. You can see some of the top calls listed there. You see our, we've responded to over 14,000 calls in the first two and a half years. We miss, so that these, this, these units go to operate seven days a week, citywide, 9:00 AM to about midnight every day. We get to about 55% of the eligible calls. So, there, you see 14,000 there, there's a lot more calls that are eligible for these units that we're not able to get to just by virtue of staffing and the need for additional units. You see our average response time is about 12 minutes from dispatch to arriving on scene. These are all responses that would be responded to without lights and siren. So, 12 minutes is, is a pretty good response time and certainly is a national average much better than we see in peer cities. These units are able to transport folks, so they, they carry a range of crisis supplies to be able to meet someone's basic needs on scene, but they also will transport someone to the Durham Recovery and Response Center, to the hospital if that's appropriate, to shelters, to other service providers, and also to residences if they're able to confirm that that person is welcome at that residence. So, transportation is another important piece of this. I will point out there, the time that this, that teams have needed police backup for emergency safety for the team, as you see, is very low, .04%. The third program we have is co-response. For us, co-response is about making sure that if there is a potential benefit of having a mental health professional on scene along with law enforcement, that we are able to do that regardless of the risk factors posed by that call. So, here I'm talking about imagine a mental health crisis where someone has a gun in their hand. We need law enforcement on that call. Someone's considering suicide and has a gun in their hand, we need law enforcement on the call, but we also will benefit from having mental health professionals on scene. And in order to do that, co-response expands the boundaries so that we can get to any call that could benefit from a mental health professional. Co-response is, co-response is a joint response between the Community Safety Department and the Durham Police Department. We have, again, a licensed clinical social worker, we pair that with a CIT-trained officer. They ride in an unmarked law enforcement vehicle as a team. The police officer is under the chain of command of the Durham Police Department and the clinician answers to us, and we have built a great collaboration with the Durham Police Department for managing that unit. They will be dispatched, they will arrive, depending on whatever the protocol is, often with other law enforcement on scene. You can see the top calls that they go to include disturbance, trespass, domestic violence, involuntary commitment, mental health crisis, and again, mental health crises are going to be calls where there is a weapon or physical violence present. I'll come back and answer all the call, questions you might have about this. I will say that our co-response, co-response is nothing new, right? I think that the newer things that we do are Crisis Call Diversion, Community Response Teams, co-response has existed in our country for a long time. I will say, in most other places, co-response is a little different than our program. It's typically embedded in a law enforcement department, and it typically, co-response is going to the calls that we might send community response teams to, whereas we use co-response to expand the boundaries and make sure we're getting mental health professionals on as many calls as possible regardless of the risk. One note about co-response is our, our community response teams clinicians are not required to have ballistic vests. They have the option, they never use it. Our co-response clinicians are required by policy to have a thin ballistic vest that they wear underneath their t-shirt, and that is because we want them on scene as close as possible to support de-escalation and to support good outcomes. So, if it's a suicide threat with a weapon, we do not want our clinicians standing outside 100 feet away from the property. We want them, a partner with law enforcement, on scene supporting outcomes, and that's why we require our co-response clinicians to wear ballistic vests. The final program that we, that we have had since the beginning is Care Navigation. Care Navigation is about what happens in the days and month following a 911 call. When first responders are on scene, they're sometimes meeting people who have very complex needs, and there's only so much they can do or they have time to do in that moment. So, they, they will make referral to a Care Navigation team. Care Navigation includes licensed clinical social workers and peer support specialists. They follow up within 48 to 72 hours of an initial 911 call. They will meet with that person, they will meet multiple times. Their goal, though, is not to provide long-term care, but to identify existing community-based resources or providers and help make that connection where resources exist. This is hard work because sometimes we do not lack the, the, the types of resources and supports that we need to support someone. But they will work with someone, the goal is that that engagement is limited to 30 days, it can be extended beyond that. But they will support that person meeting multiple times with them in community to help connect them to existing care. You can see the top needs that they're working on, it might be the need for behavioral health care, certainly housing, food insecurity, substance use dependency support, and others, but those are some of the top needs. If you haven't seen us out in the community, this is what we look like. Our vehicles are wrapped in this way, and in any warm time, you're going to see these mint green shirts, which we've become known for, and in the cooler months, we have a darker pullover that has the HART logo on it. Our fleet is, oh, a motley crew as a, as a new public safety department, but we have a penchant for minivans and SUVs. We don't, we're not a lights and siren responder, and we carry a bunch of crisis supplies. This is just about, you know, really our growth. So, again, we started, we started operations in the summer of 2022, so we've been operating for about two and a half years, almost three. We started off, our very first year was called our Pilot Year. We only had, we had a 20-person department, so we were not staffed to respond citywide. We looked at the data, selected areas where there was the highest volume of eligible calls, and that's where we started. And for that first year, we operated, and you can see in about one-third of the city. We started off Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, and over the course of that year, we would expand our hours. Currently, today, we operate citywide seven days a week. Our programs operate either 12 or 15 hours a day depending on the program. Our infill responses are 15 hours a day, and Crisis Call Diversion is 12 hours, 12 hours a day, seven days a week. So, that's been, you know, a lot of growth. We started again in our first planning year of a 13-person department would move to 20 people, then to 50 people, which is where we sit today, with possibility for additional growth next year. An important part of our program is our integration in 911, and so in the Durham Emergency Communications Center. And that means a few things. It means, first, all of our, all of our calls are dispatched through 911 and are handled through the DECC protocol. All of our responders carry public safety radios, the same as you would expect to see on law enforcement, which means we're able to communicate not only with emergency communications, but also request backup, and also be requested by other public safety agencies on calls. All of our teams have automatic vehicle location, which means that, that 911 knows where our teams are at at any time, and all of these are additional safety measures that help us have the strong track record of safety that we have today. We get questions about, so, you know, how does the, how does the process work, the call process work? So, if you call 911 today, that call is going to be answered by a telecommunicator in the Durham Emergency Communications Center. That telecommunicator is going to pull up a, a computer-assisted protocol, so that they're going to ask you what type of crisis you are, you're experiencing, and based on that, they'll pull up a computer program that's going to have them ask a standard set of questions based on the type of crisis you're experiencing. The telecommunicator is going to input your answers into that, and at the end of that, the computer's going to, based on those answers, going to say what type of call this is. It will assign one of, I think, 1,500 different call natures based on how those answers have been populated. We then, as a, as a public safety team, so all of us, we have made decisions about what the most appropriate response is based on the call nature. We've built in response plans. So, that means that it's ultimately not about the discretion of the telecommunicator. The telecommunicator is following a set protocol that we have agreed to, so that if it is a trespass call and there's no weapon, what that, what that computer protocol is going to say is, the most appropriate response right now is a community response team. If that, if that community response team is not available, it will default to the next most appropriate response, which would be co-response. If that is not available, it would default to a law enforcement-only response. The same thing with any type of call. If it's a suicide threat with weapon, it's going to recommend co-response. If co-response is not available, it would recommend a law enforcement response. The benefits of that are, one, people in Durham do not need to know about HART, they don't need to request HART, it's not about calling 911 and, and saying, this is the type of response that I want. Our public safety team has made a decision about the most appropriate response, someone calling 911 needs to answer questions about their crisis, and then 911 will make a determination based on the available units we have of which unit is the most appropriate to send. And that means that we don't have to worry about calls not being answered if, if, if our department, which is still small, is tied up on other calls and not available, 911 will make sure that another response is sent in a timely manner, and that might be law enforcement. So, in general, that's how it works. A call comes in, telecommunicator answers, they go through a set of questions, based on the answers, there's a recommendation, and then they will send the, the most appropriate response that is available now to respond to those calls. I want to talk a little bit about what we're seeing in our first two and a half years of operation. First thing I want to talk about is safety. So, when we, you know, when we started planning for this work, I think one of the most common questions that any city, any community faces is our concerns about safety. So, you're talking about adding in new types of responders, sending social workers and others to calls that you used to send law enforcement to, and I think it's very understandable and natural that we have concerns that arise around safety of responders. So, the first thing I want to say at a very high level is, what we're seeing in Durham is the same track record we're seeing established in other communities that are doing this well, is, is a strong track record of safety. We have, again, for our community response teams, we've responded to over 14,000 calls. We have not had a responder injured in those calls, and we are so focused on safety that we require every one of our responders after every single call to answer questions about how safe they felt, and we report that publicly on our dashboard. You can see in this first slide, so these are two data points related to that. This first slide is how often do our teams radio for emergent police backup for their own safety? I want to make sure that as you see this, that you're looking at that left hand, what is the Y-axis there, because it's very small, right? The top of that Y-axis doesn't even get you to half of a percent of the time. So, on, our teams call for emergent police backup less than one-half of 1% of the time. And I do not think the standard for that should be zero, right? There is uncertainty and unpredictability on calls. What we want to make sure that our teams are prepared to do is that on the rare occasions when that happens, they are trained, they're able to radio for backup, and no one is injured. And that's exactly what happens today. Our teams have the right training. When these rare situations happen, they're able to press their emergency activation button, and because we need law enforcement and are grateful to be on that team, law enforcement shows up and they're there. And our teams know how to respond, how to detach themselves from a call in an appropriate manner. The other thing is how safe our teams feel. Again, as I shared, we, all of our responders answer this after every single call. Over 99% of the time, our call, our teams say they feel safe on calls. And again, I think, I think that that is a very high standard, and I feel very good about that, and I am not at all discouraged that it's not 100% of the time, because I think if our goal was that our responders feel safe 100% of the time, I don't think that's a realistic goal, and I think that would cause us to be way too conservative in the calls that we're sending responders to. It also is a reminder, and I, this is an important thing to name, that being a first responder is about, for all of our first responders across the board, there is a measure of courage in that. There is always unpredictability, there is always uncertainty on a call, and so I want to say that our HART responders- And so I want to say that our heart responders, you know, the, the same type of courage that we might recognize and commend, oh, that we might commend, I'll, I'll fly, uh, is the same thing that we see in heart. Again, no one's been injured, high degrees of safety. Heart's a benefit to law enforcement. I'll talk about two quick measures here. We save law enforcement thousands of hours. How do we do that? And we do that by, our community response teams and crisis call diversion are responding to calls that we would have had to send law enforcement to, but we don't. They're able to resolve those calls unseen. You can see the number of hours that that, that is increasing every year as we're growing, um, over 8,000 so far this fiscal year. And that's, I think, going back to February. These are hours that we save. Why is that a benefit to law enforcement? Because law enforcement, like here in many other places, is dealing with staffing shortages. If we can free up law enforcement, that means law enforcement is available to be on the calls where we need them even more. They're, they're more available for, uh, calls responding to violent crime or gun violence, right? So that's important. And I have had law enforcement officials come up when we are at PAC meetings and talking about this work to say, hey, I was skeptical about this, but I hear you, because they, they hear us, we're on the same radio channels, law enforcement. I hear you taking calls, we're not having to come rescue you and save the day, and I appreciate that. The other thing is we're increasingly requested by the Durham Police Department to come to calls. You can see this is, again, uh, you know, every fiscal year since we started, already 400 calls this fiscal year, and that's through February. As, as law enforcement is becoming more familiar with us, um, as they are becoming more confident in our response, they are more and more requesting our presence on scene, and that's a good thing. Let me ask Cheryl, how much more time do I have? And I can, I can stop at any mo, I'm, I'm close.
Because we have, you gave us 20 minutes for questions.
Okay, great, great.
So you're going into question time.
Um, I want to talk a little about some of the, some of the comparative data we see. Now, we're limited in this because we track a lot of things that law enforcement may not track. And so we can't compare everything. We can't compare connections to care because that's not something that law enforcement tracks. But, you know, one thing that we're able to compare is transportation rates. And so if a call is eligible for heart and that call gets a heart response, we can look at what happens when an eligible call gets a heart response versus when it gets a law enforcement only response. And on this graph here, you can see that when, when, uh, when a call gets a heart response, that call has, uh, higher rates of transportation to the Durham Recovery and Response Center compared with the law enforcement only response. And I think that is in, I don't think that says anything negative about law enforcement. I think that is a positive thing about the benefit of having mental health professionals on scene, their ability to understand something that could be appropriate for DRC as opposed to maybe transporting to the hospital, their ability to get someone to voluntarily get in the car to go to DRC. But we see an increase in transportation rates. The other thing that we see are lower arrest rates on calls. Now I want to point out that the arrest rate is not zero. And the arrest rate is not zero because heart understands that when we get on scene, certain things need a law enforcement response and we're able to request law enforcement. But you can see in every month, if it's a heart eligible response, and this would include co-response, and it, and there is a heart member on site, we see that associated with lower arrest rates. Uh, the last thing I'll say is, um, heart is, uh, is recognized as, you know, this is an emerging field and heart is recognized as a leader in it. Um, and I'm proud of the work that our, our team has done, but we, what does that look like? That means that we have people coming from across the country to visit Durham every month. We have cities on the West Coast that have visited us twice in the last year, Seattle, Richmond, California. We are committed to being a site where others can learn. We have folks visiting from across the state. The police chief from Roxborough is coming, um, actually this afternoon. And we are also part of national organizations that are convened by Georgetown Law, the Fair Institute, Harvard and others to help shape and inform national best practice. And as much as we are a place that is helping others learn, we are a place that is committed to learning ourselves. We have processes in place because this is complicated work and we can all get better at it. And that is certainly true of our department. And we are very committed to transparency, to evaluation, um, to learning from our work. On the transparency front, we have this public facing dashboard. If you haven't looked at it, I would encourage you to. It's updated pretty regularly and you can see a lot about our work, where we respond, what are the outcomes of those calls. We also have two ongoing externally funded evaluations. One by RTI that will have more results coming out this year. And another by Duke's Cook Center funded by the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. These have been multi-year evaluations and most of those, um, final reports will be coming out in the next 12 months. And then finally, data is really important, but stories are too. And I would encourage you, if you have not had a chance to see the documentary that RTI created on our work, or I think even better, there was a three-part, um, podcast series with reporters who were embedded with us. They interviewed Chief Andrews, they interviewed other law enforcement, they interviewed people in the community. It is fantastic reporting. We've been committed to this because stories matter and inviting journalists with integrity to be there to report on the work is a helpful way for others to be able to hear and understand what it actually looks like on the ground. And so really great reporting if you're interested to, to hear more about, um, what this work is, uh, looking like day to day. And I'll stop there. Thank you for your time and ready to answer your questions.
Thank you so much, Ryan and your team. I just want to say, I think the heart team and program is one of, like, Durham's most amazing programs that we've been able to create. Uh, I'm grateful to the city council for starting the heart program and for all of the work that you have done, your team has done to take this on and steward it into, even though we weren't the first in the country, but I feel like you guys have created a model that now cities and counties that have it, had it before us, are looking at Durham of the ways that you've been able to implement it. I had a few questions before I bring it back to the board as well. So I know, obviously I completely agree with you that, you know, the co-response method is necessary um, when it comes to situations where there is somewhat, an individual that could inflict harm on themselves or others around them. How have you seen with, working with, uh, chief, with the chief of police of how it's been able to lift the burden off of police officers from not having to respond to every single call? Have you gotten like anecdotal or even data-driven feedback from the chief of police of like, is there less overtime that folks are having to work? Do the police officers feel less strained on a day-to-day because they're able to focus on the calls they really need to get to?
So the main things I can share, um, now a few data points. Already shared, you know, obviously we are freeing up time. Now, I can't, I can't report to you, I could learn, like, is that showing up in fewer overtime hours? It must be showing up someplace, but there are these thousands of hours. And Chief Andrews, who has become a real champion of our work, um, has shared that as we, as she is going through meetings with folks in Durham Police Department, she's increasingly hearing questions from the law enforcement officers, when are there going to be more heart units? Because one of the things that you'll hear if you're listening to Police Channel A is folks call, officers calling in and saying, is there a heart unit available? And we might have two or three units covering the entire city, so we may not have a unit available because they're tied up on other calls. So I think we're seeing, you know, the, the increase requests from heart or from PD, the anecdotal conversations that we might have with law enforcement who are, um, sharing both the, the candid skepticism that they really had about this and how, as they have seen and heard us answer calls, uh, a really growing appreciation for it. Um, RTI did a survey of all of, of law enforcement that showed that, uh, let's see, something like, I wrote it down here, I don't have it memorized, just in case this question came up, give me one second. So they did a survey of, of officers and asked them, you know, where they were today. This was like a year and a half after heart started and where they were when heart started. And 37% of officers believed before heart started that it could be helpful on a mental health crisis. And that number had doubled in our first year, after our first year of operation to 67%. And I think that's really promising. And honestly, I would have thought it would take longer, um, to see that type of growing support from law enforcement. But it also has happened, it hasn't happened by accident. We've been very intentional, Chief Andrews and I, about a lot of communication with our officers, showing that we are very appreciative of the important role our officers play, um, being very transparent in our work. I think all of that has led, as well as just doing the work and have, and having it being heard on, on Police Channel A, to growing support from law enforcement. The other questions you ask, and I can't speak about how that has impacted, say, stress or other wellness indicators for officers, but yeah.
Thank you. And then other question. So I know right now, the way that through the 911 call center, to be able to expand a program like this within the county, because that is what I personally really hope that we're able to do, what would that require within the, our 911 infrastructure that we have in the city and the county?
Well, let me just speak to, at least at a high level, a couple of challenges. And I think challenges that we could figure out, but we ultimately probably need DECC and the sheriff's office and our team to have some meetings to figure out how it could work if that were to move forward. One of the challenges we face right now is any call that comes into 911 is going to be answered by a, a DECC telecommunicator. The telecommunicator is going to try to figure out, or is going to ask where the call is occurring. If that call is occurring in Durham County, the only other thing they're going to try to figure out is, is this a, a call for law enforcement, a call for fire, or a call for EMS? If it's a call for fire or EMS, that call is going to stay with DECC and they'll go through the protocol. If it's a call for law enforcement, they're not going to go through the protocol and they'll transfer that call to the Durham Sheriff's Office Call Center. The one thing that we would have to figure out is, uh, DECC uses EPD protocol. The sheriff's office, uh, my understanding is that they do not. So we would need time to work with the sheriff's office to build out and understand what that protocol is because we could not use our existing, our existing protocol, which is routed through the EPD protocol. So I think there are, and then we'd have to figure out, is that unit being dispatched by the sheriff's office? Is that call then, after they go through the protocol, being transferred back to DECC to tran, uh, to dispatch us? I think there are some logistical things that we would have to sort out that I do not have answers for. And it would, but I think that we could get there through some meetings between DECC, the sheriff's office, my department, to then come back and answer questions about, this is how it could work, these are the trade-offs and limitations of it, et cetera.
Could we coordinate, work to coordinate meetings like that and, and, oh, there's, oh, there's Sheriff's. Kind of like coordinating those meetings with y'all to figure out what that infrastructure needs would be? And maybe come back to us?
That, that is the intent and Ms. Brinson can talk through that as well.
Right, Duane Brinson, Assistant County Manager. We are planning, um, we've had some discussions, representatives from the sheriff's office, the county, um, as well as the city. We are preparing an RFQ to have a professional come in and tell us what it would take to make this work. You know, whether that is combining or how to make the infrastructure work with the heart program. I think those are very good questions that obviously we need to answer before we go into this. So that RFQ is getting ready to, uh, hit the streets. And, um, we will move forward from there in evaluating the call centers and the challenges that may or may not come with the implementation of heart.
The, the data analysis, and I know Ryan spoke about that, and the time involved that the city went through is most important to ensure we have a product that, um, both the sheriff and the city and the county, that we all can embrace is the right approach. It's a, it's an effective program and it's doing a phenomenal, um, in changing lives in the community. Uh, we just want to make sure that we integrate it in a way that makes the best sense if it's determined that's the route we move forward with.
Thank you. And then my last question I have is.
Can I just ask a quick follow-up though? I, I just wonder though, from what you just said, Ryan, you just said, you feel like a first step would just literally be sitting down and talking with the DECC, heart and the office of the sheriff. Um, it seems like that's really important as a first step. I mean, it's, can we kind of do two things at the same time?
Absolutely. I think those converse, we're already talking. And so that is the, the, the more formalized step is, is, um, Brian shared RTI, um, the city did an RFP. And, um, RTI, I believe, am I saying this correctly? Either way, an external entity help with the data analysis. And that step still needs to happen. I mean, there are dual paths, um, but, uh, and we of course will, uh, continue our collaborative conversations. However, um, I did, did want to clarify, I think we're saying the same thing, but we, we don't want to, um, not do that step.
I just want to clarify because it seems like what Ryan just described about how that would actually work, it need, it seems like that's something that everyone here needs to figure out. And that RTI can help with the data analysis of the calls, but, okay, I, I just, yeah.
We're in the same page.
Yeah, okay, great.
Yeah, and so my last question was, trying to get, was, and this may be hard to calculate me a data, but like, is there any way, or have y'all been collecting, say, like, calls that before hearts, uh, before the heart program, when an officer would have to respond to a call that didn't necessarily need armed response to, of now compared to times where we have unarmed response going to those calls, of a minute, how escalation has minimized in the difference between those calls with armed response and now without armed response?
So one, I think the work that RTI is doing now, their three-year evaluation funded by Arnold Ventures, Arnold Ventures will provide more detailed look into that. I think, you know, the things that we're able to look at now are, because, so now we know as a matter of fact, we know the calls that are, that are identified by DECC as these would have been appropriate for heart. And we can look at what happens when heart goes to those calls and look at what happens when heart is not available and they get a law enforcement only response. And then we can look at things that are jointly, uh, data that is jointly, uh, that both of those groups are recording. So which is why you see something like arrest data. So we know if someone is arrested on either one of those calls. We could look, and I'm sure that this is something RTI is looking at, as, at use of force. Use of force is a pretty rare thing. Over the three years of data, when RTI did an analysis of Durham Police Department calls, I think there were 170-something instances that were reported of use of force over the three years of data. And I say that because things that are statistically small in number take some time to be able to suss out the difference in those things because the sample size is pretty small. But I think we'll learn more from RTI. We can certainly look at, um, something like arrests and see clear differences, um, in arrest rates across calls that heart is involved in versus a call that was eligible for heart when they, when they weren't. And we'll learn more as we continue to work with our evaluation partners. Okay.
I look forward to seeing that data. Commissioner Burton?
Thank you, Chair Alom. So, um, I have a, a couple of question and a comment. So are there any other jurisdictions that they do some kind of model like this countywide? Do y'all know, or they just only in municipalities? Because I heard you list Austin, San Francisco, things like that.
Oh, so Harris County, yeah. Harris County is a good example. Harris County, Texas.
They do it countywide?
Yes, they do it countywide, yeah.
All right, because, and the reason I ask this, and I'm going to put this on the record, I am for heart, I am for heart countywide. But I would like to get the 911 data about the calls that occur out in the county. And I know there was some discussion around that, and this is the reason why. What I realize in this role is a lot of people who live in the city of Durham, they really don't go out in the county parts of Durham. So what I tend to do on Sunday afternoons is drive out in the county parts of Durham. And so when you drive out in the county parts of Durham, particularly in Bahama, Rougemont, you know, you got these big horse farms, you got houses that are far apart from each other. You've got these curves and winding roads and things like that. And I drove down Farrington Mill Road the other day, which is off of Stagecoach. And you know, it's rural out there, you may have one or two homes far apart. So I'm just really curious as to, okay, what are the calls that the sheriff's office is getting for those parts? So, you know, you all just said, you know, looking at data. So we can make sure that, okay, if we, you know, don't need a co-response for a lot of the calls, right? I want to make sure if we do this, we got the data, we got the information. Because what I'm realizing is a lot of people don't go out in the county parts, right? And what we do in the actual city, the needs that are in the actual city may be different in the county. So I want to make sure, and I'm glad you said Harris County, because now I can research that. So I think that's just making. So I think that's just making these data-informed decisions, so, thank you.
Thank you. And we're very supportive of data-informed decisions and agree that data analysis would, of those calls would be helpful. So, thank you.
Vice Chair Dr. Lee?
Thank you all for this. This is, um, I think this is a very, very good summary and then start in a direction of what my colleague, um, Commissioner Burton just said about county. Obviously, that is a hot topic, but the county has to be done differently. It just, it has to be, um, at least initially, has to be a different, kind of a derivative. I wouldn't say a different model, but maybe a derivative. Um, I really like the idea, um, that Dwayne mentioned about, you know, having someone come in and like look at the bigger picture of how this could work. But I also believe it's very important outside of a consultant for us to try to get together to, to talk about this, right? When we're in meetings like this, sometimes it feels we're talking about, talking over the sheriff, the sheriff's head, you know, like, like, like he's not sitting right here, right? And, you know, this, I think this is a start, but I think this should be a collaboration, right? I think part of it can be, you know, obviously, this is, this was an update on the, on, on the HART program as it is. But I think we need something like this where the Sheriff's Department is sitting right next to you all, we're sitting here and we're working through these details, you know, hey, what, when, if RTI could do the data, the review, and we're sitting here, we're talking about it, what can it look like? Instead of our separate meetings, you know, we have separate information coming here, we have separate conversations here, right? And it is, and we're in the same place as we, as we've been for a long time. I believe the, the sheriff believes where, he, he has stated he supports HART in the county, but it's a different look. That's how, um, that's how it works in business, right? People have different ideas and then you work together and you build together a program that both can be satisfied with, at least to start, so that we can get something going. So I would appreciate, you know, if we could sit together and we could, we can all get the data, get the, the calls, do some sort of analysis, just straight data, not necessarily opinions, not feelings, just pure data, what can happen? What can we do with the Sheriff's Department, or the Office of the Sheriff, my apologies, the Office of the Sheriff? What can we do with HART? What we, what can we do as a county commission to make this all work, at least to get things started? I, I don't think we end up with a, with a final product. I think we end up with a first step. What does the first level look like? I mentioned this a while ago, is what does a pilot look like? Sheriff Burkehead is high on data just like I am. If we did a pilot of some sort for a year, let's look at the data the next year and say, okay, you know, out of these 2,000 calls, 1,500 of them didn't need a sheriff's deputy, right? That doesn't mean we say sheriff deputies don't have to go, it's just we need the data to help ease the, the, the ease of transition. So what can we do that? So what I would love to see is something like this where, where Sheriff Burkehead, his staff is here, you all are here, this is what we do, this is what we want, how can we meet in the middle? How can we mitigate that? How can we facilitate that? And then we come out with action steps to go that way. All work, all in the same path of what the, uh, the RFP, that's what you said it was, RFP, RFQ, um, uh, working in that space. I just want to throw my support in to get into data, reviewing it in parallel with this RFQ going, and, uh, I support that path as well.
Just a quick response. So, um, everything you said is the way we do everything, Dr. Lee. So, you know, we built this thing in collaboration with, on the city side, with Durham Police Department and with Chief Andrews. And Sheriff Burkett and I have had a conversations and I am, I'm ready whenever, I'm happy to, I want to work on this collaboratively, um, follow the direction of the county manager and the sheriff and other leadership, but we're prepared to meet, we're prepared to do that work and think together about what this might look like and what would be a good start. As you know, we're a big believer in pilots, we can start small and then learn from it and grow from there. And we're a big believer in data. So you didn't say a single thing that, um, you're going to get any resistance or pushback from me. So, thank you for that, fully agree.
Sheriff Burkhead, what are your thoughts about, about that? And I'm saying this because just like I mentioned, I don't want to talk past, you know, the Office of the Sheriff, I want to hear directly.
No, absolutely. Uh, good morning. As Ryan has mentioned, we've talked about this a number of times, even in the inception of the HART program inside the city. So, uh, the short answer is I'm open to continuing those conversations and welcome RTI to do the, the research so we can get the data.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I will say these have been great conversations and what we will do is come back with some timelines for the framework, because there are dual paths. And we'll work with the sheriff and with Ryan, the city manager and others, and come back to the board in a communication to share what timeframe, um, the conversations can occur. All right?
To, to Commissioner's point, there always seems to be a divide when there really isn't a divide. We're all working for the public's safety. Uh, and I've known Ryan for a number of years. Uh, and I think it's important that what you hear me say is co-response model. One of the programs they're currently running very successfully with the Durham Police Department is a co-response model. So we have precedent already set and we have a model in place that perhaps after we review the data, we could replicate on a larger scale.
Anyone from this side? Commissioner Valentine?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So I think it comes as no surprise that, uh, I support HART as a person who started their career in social work. I see the utility in the work that's already being done and I'm hoping that we can expand, uh, this model into the county. I'm encouraged by the external evaluations that are going on with RTI and Shine, and so I'm looking forward to seeing what that data shows. I too think that, uh, data is important. Um, how we get there? I, I think, uh, Vice Chair Lee sort of opened up an avenue for how we get there. And that's through, um, conversations, candid conversations with our partners, i.e. the sheriff. I'd like to, to know, um, two things. Well, actually, to make an additional, uh, statement. Um, I don't see this as an intervention that replaces law enforcement in the city or public safety in the county. It's something different, right? Um, but with respect to the, I'll give you an opportunity to, to answer that. Uh, with respect to the RFQ, I want to know what, what, what that looks like and who we're reaching out to with respect to the data. And I've talked previously about what I thought was an important expansion of HART services into the schools. And so I'm sort of interested in, uh, how you see that as part of this larger expansion of HART and what that might, might look like.
Um, did you want to go first and talk about the RFQ question? ACN Brinson?
I, yes, I can. So the RFQ, this, um, the desire to publish the RFQ came from the committee who had been talking about the challenges of the call centers and what that looks like. Uh, that, that, that committee, Sheriff's Office, County, City Staff, uh, decided to publish the RFQ. That's going through engineering, it's in its final stages, it hasn't been published yet as far as I know. But that'll be going out using our standard RFQ process. And I'm not intimately familiar with that process, I'll defer to our manager.
Yeah, so typically when we do an RFQ, um, we are required to, um, in our standards to publish it for at least 30 days. And so, um, from, we envision this going out real soon and, um, getting some clarity on who the vendor would be and by July, if not before. I'll say if not before, but, um, we know these processes can take a little bit of time. And as with the city's process, they, the data analytics part will take some time. Um, but the dual path approach that we're looking at, I, I feel as though it'll allow us to come back to the board in the fall, if not before, um, to share updates on what components, if there are any, that we may, um, consider, just by virtue of the conversations among the work groups.
Um, well then I'll speak to your comment and then one of your questions. On your comment, one thing that Chief Andrews and I consistently say is this is not an either or, but a both and. I think we certainly need law enforcement and I think we certainly benefit from having an additional type of response to complement to that something like HART. Um, and so the city, you know, the city has not, um, advanced this work by taking from law enforcement, it's advanced this work by making additional investments. I also think that it's true that at least in the city side, I won't speak to the county, that on the city side, we do see support, that there are some calls that we have asked law enforcement to go to that we could send other responders to. That's consistent with the both and approach, that does not mean an either or. So I think that we're learning about that. To your question about schools, um, I would say that we're in the early stage of that. I'm very supportive and interested in the idea of, uh, if it makes sense for our school board leaders and for the superintendent, if it's something that our principals and teachers and families want, I'm very supportive of understanding what the role for HART could be in our schools. I received my first communication a few weeks ago from a school board member copying the DPS superintendent about wanting to begin those conversations. I replied back that we, you know, to the superintendent that we are very interested and whatever timing makes sense and they're, uh, to begin those conversations, to work with, to work with his team, to engage perhaps some schools or principals in thinking about what a pilot would look like in our schools. But very interested in that, I just think we're in the, in those stages of, of planning right now and given where we're at right now in this fiscal year and talking with the city manager thinks that it's going to take a little bit of work to figure out exactly what that looks like, but we are very committed and would love to be in, in partnership and collaboration with our schools on thinking through some vision for what HART could look like in schools, again, if that is, um, if that is something that is of interest to the community.
Uh, thank you, Ryan, for your commitment in this space.
Commissioner Valentine, if I may, uh, there is something happening organically in our schools now and it's a very wonderful, uh, update that I'll provide. Our SROs are already in communication and contact with members of HART. And, and there are calls that we receive and our SROs, uh, receive in our schools that they'll call for HART assistance. And most of the time they get a response and then they can work together to address whatever issue that is, uh, occurring in the school. So that's happening right now. Uh, and then we connect with the parent, we connect with, uh, if there's a, a team already in place on, on the parental side that we don't know about, we connect them. So, so that's happening now organically through our SROs and, and our relationship with HART.
Uh, thank you, Sheriff.
Commissioner Jacobs?
Thank you. First of all, great presentation. Thank you so much, um, and just for the amazing work that HART is doing. And also just the best practices around using data, the transparency and reporting out to the community and the type of program evaluation that you are doing. Um, I also want to highlight that HART has already been partnering with the county since the beginning. Um, the first teams, um, one of the first, um, teams was EMS, um, our community paramedics, Helen Ladd and her staff, um, going out with HART. And also Rashana Parker. Uh, there's a strong partnership between Justice Services and HART and, um, the Familiar Faces pilot that they are both working on, focusing on those 10 to 15 people who we see, um, repeatedly calling, um, 911. Could you just mention some of the data about, like, examples of familiar faces who you...
Well, we're going to be coming back to joint city-county with a bunch then, so...
Okay, right, but just so, yeah, yes. One person, for example?
Um, sure. Uh, the, first, let me just double down and say, uh, I think we have great and growing partnerships and collaboration with the county in addition to Rashana, who has been an amazing partner of ours. We have a growing partnership with Maggie and DSS.
Right.
And so, you know, critical work that's happening there, it really requires that.
And if you want to wait...
The only reason I'm pausing is because it's hard to do it succinctly because when I think about...
Well, we can wait till you present to joint city-county.
It's coming and we'll talk a lot more about it, yes. Thank you.
We'll stop with that. Um, so I, I also want to highlight that, that slide that showed the number of people who get transported directly to Durham County's funded recovery response center, our 24-hour crisis responder center, and also the, um, impact on the number, the reduction in people being arrested. Those are goals that are aligned with Durham County. Um, we are part of the National Stepping Up Initiative whose goal is to reduce the number of people with mental illness being, um, sent to jail or ending up in our jail. And this is really important because not only is it more humane, but it's also cost-effective. Um, every person that HART diverts through the first, um, intervention, the diversion of calls, the call diversion, that saves us money. Directly connecting people to resources rather than having somebody end up in the emergency room or in jail or law enforcement going out. So these are, these are national best practices. I, in January, I had the honor of participating in a national roundtable with NACO on local behavioral crisis response. And, um, I pulled up my, my slide, if I can get it, from the, the roundtable. Um, the, um, this is research that was being, um, done by, um, the Pugh Charitable Trust. And they're doing national research and their number, there are four recommendations. The number one recommendation was standardized identification, coding, and triage of behavioral 911 calls. So us making sure that all of our calls are triaged by mental health professionals is considered the national best practice. And I really hope that that's something that everyone can get together and talk about, how, what would that look like to happen? Because, um, it's, you know, we've already discussed why that's important, but that, that is, um, something that was emphasized at the conference. So, um, I was wondering if you all have been able to do any translation of the cost savings of HART? Not only to law enforcement, but our entire system of care? Is there, have you guys been able to do any of that?
So, we have done some preliminary internal work in the city, but I think that doing it really well, um, it requires, I mean, it, it's an easy thing to like not do well. And so we have done some internal work, but we're also, I think, on this particular matter, partnering with RTI, part of what they're doing is a, a cost assessment. And I think that will be something that's coming out in the next six, sometime in, within this next fiscal year, they're completing that, that's one piece of it. Um, and so while we've done some, while we've done some internal work that shows that the, that the cost of, say, sending a community response team to law enforcement is comparable and/or a little less, I want to say that given the, some of the complexities and those types of cost-benefit analyses, I would rather wait for results from RTI and kind of a more thorough study of that because I think it's pretty complicated.
Okay. And I, I think this is an important question. As we have less and less resources, it's just incumbent on us to make sure that we are, um, being as cost-effective as possible with, in every way. with, in every way. And I wondered, Madam Manager, the fact that RTI did the city study, and I don't know how much the study cost. Of course, you know, the city is 300,000-plus people, the county is about 40,000 people. I'm just wondering, is it possible for us to not put it out for bid and just to do a contract directly with them, since they already know, work with us? I don't know.
Let us follow up on that. The data analysis and the time that the data was evaluated, the period is long enough that we need to bid it out.
Okay.
But if there are ways that we can do it differently, we will let you know. But because of the time in which it happened, we're going to have to bid it.
Okay, thank you. And then on the map where you showed us the pilot and now your coverage, it's really interesting if you look at that map, because you can see there are some parts of the city that used to be the county that are a little bit further out, you know, some of these little donut hole pieces. I'd be curious, have you all been tracking, you know, to Commissioner Burton's point, about what it is like to respond already to places that are further outside of the city limits?
That is certain something we could do, and you could even, on our website, you could see how call responses are dispersed out into those areas. So, you know, how many calls are we responding to out there? I don't think we've done a particular analysis on the difference in those calls, say, on the outer periphery compared to kind of closer in to downtown or other parts of the city. But there's something, we have the data that we could do something like that.
Okay. I just thought that would be interesting. So, anyway, well, I'm excited about the next steps, and I appreciate everybody working together on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Oh, Commissioner Burton?
Why can't we see the film?
Oh, it, so it is available online. You can just go watch that film anytime you want to, you know, a little popcorn tonight if you'd like. I would recommend that, I think that the three-part podcast series is some of the best journalism that's been done on alternative response. And you really get, you get to hear directly from officers, from Chief Andrews, you get to hear from neighbors that we have been working with. It's really good journalism, so it's worth listening to. I'll also say, you know, if you all are ever interested in coming to visit or to do a ride-along, those are always things that we can make happen. I'm happy to coordinate with you, Madam Manager, if that would be of interest to anyone. But thank you for the opportunity to be here today.
Thank you. I forgot one request I did have, Madam Manager, around the recovery response center. I noticed in the data that Ryan showed us that there's been less, what's the word, transfers to the recovery response center. And I have been in several meetings where we've, actually with Duke Regional Behavioral Health as well, where I think there have been some challenges with communicating with recovery response center. I don't know what the data's been for the Office of the Sheriff, how that's been going. But I know there, there have been, since COVID, we haven't really gotten a report from them. And also, I think, related to site visits, we haven't been there in a long time, and especially for the new board members. So that would be another good field trip, but, and so I don't know if it's appropriate during the budget, work sessions, or whenever, we could get them to come and do a presentation to us would be great.
We will-
Thank you.
... that.
Thank you all so much. Okay, we are running behind. I know I said I was going to run a tight ship. I need to get this ship back on course. So we have our next presentation from the Planning Department. We have 30 minutes scheduled for it. I'm going to save 15 minutes for presentation, 15 minutes for questions, and I'm asking my colleagues, Commissioner Valentine, Commissioner Jacobs, Commissioner Burton, please, let's keep our questions and comments succinct as possible moving forward. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I was going to say, I can do this in five if y'all can, but, oh, all right, so-
Done, five minutes.
Every year, as part of our inter-local agreement that creates the Joint Department, we bring forward a work program, a proposed work program for the following fiscal year as part of the budget process, and we review it with you all. So that's what we're doing this morning. As a reminder, the work program has a couple of different categories. We, it catalogs all of the ongoing processes that we are either legally mandated to do or that we do by virtue of county and city kind of policy and directives. And then there are a number of discretionary projects. So those are the things that can change from year to year. The bulk of the work program does not. So, let's talk about some of those new discretionary items for this year. We have, as you can see on the slide, quite a number of them. The first is our very first comprehensive plan evaluation and assessment report. So with the new comp plan, which I guess is not new anymore, since it's been around for a couple of years now, one of the policies in there says that we will reevaluate it and update it every two years. So we're coming up on the two-year mark, and that report is being added to the work program for that reason. We also have a number of small area plans, which I'm going to talk about in upcoming slides, as well as a countywide open space plan that I will also talk a little bit about in an upcoming slide. And then the last three items that I'll mention quickly are, the first is a multimodal traffic impact analysis. So you all are probably familiar with a traditional traffic impact analysis, where when a development proposes a new project, it's evaluated in terms of its impact on primarily the road network and motor vehicle traffic. This multimodal process would allow us to determine what impacts to the other modes of transportation, pedestrians, bicycles, et cetera, and then require improvements that address those impacts. Right now, the only improvements we can require are really motor vehicle-related improvements. So, that would be to develop a new process to allow us to do that. Then we have the Emery Woods Estates National Register nomination. This was a bit of a surprise addition. The state historic preservation office surprisingly called us and said, hey, we have grant money. Do you want to do a project? And we said, yes, we do. And so we've, this project has already started, actually, and so it's, it's new to the work program for that reason. And then the last thing on the list here is an update of our local historic district's inventory. This is something that should happen about every 10 years, and we're coming up on the 10-year mark from the last time any of them were updated. All right, so a little bit about the small area plans, and I've got Scott Whitman here with me today. He is the manager of the community planning team, and so he can help answer more specific questions. But as part of our small area planning process, we are looking at areas where they are likely to see a high rate of change or other factors where we'd probably need to take a more detailed look at the land use and other development-related things in that area. So we went through a process with the Joint City-City Planning Committee and proposed what we thought were the top priorities. These are those three. So Lakewood Park, and there's a map there showing you the location. These boundaries, by the way, they are just kind of temporary boundaries. We will be working with the neighborhoods on solidifying what the actual boundaries of the study area will be for each one. The next one is Greater Bragtown. This is an area that has seen a lot of activity. It's also an area that still has a fair amount of low-intensity developed land that is in the county still, and there's expected to be a fair amount of transition in this area in general. So another good candidate. And then the last one is the Hillside Oak Ridge area. This is kind of west of Hillside High School, between Cornwallis and Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway. And then the last item that I just want to highlight in a little more detail is this countywide open space plan. We currently have five open space plans that cover different parts of city and county, but that leaves a lot of gaps in between those areas that don't have any particular guidance in terms of policies or actions related to open space protection and preservation. And it also leaves a lot of gaps in terms of identifying areas for land acquisition priorities for both the city and the county, whether it be for active recreation like city parks, or more passive conservation, like what we often see in the county. This one project, we're very excited about, because it actually will complete three actions from the comprehensive plan, environment actions, four, nine, and 10. So there's a lot there for this one. But let me see. Yes, I did it. Okay. That is a whirlwind tour of the-
Amazing. Okay, everyone's presentation after this. Follow Sarah's example. Bring it to the board. Are there any questions? Comments? Oh, Commissioner Jacobs, very short.
So, you guys have a lot of things to be accomplished in FY '26, like, a lot, right? The small area plans, the comp plan update, UDO revisions, landscape manual, multimodal plan, historic inventory. That's a lot. And plus, the county open space plan. You guys feeling okay about that?
So two of those projects, the open space plan and the multimodal TIA, those are subject to budget approval for funding for consultants. We cannot complete those in-house by ourselves. We will manage them, and we will certainly participate and be helping with the consultants, but I want to just be transparent that those will be consultant-funded projects, or funded-
So when you say, "subject to budget," you mean the budget for your department?
Correct.
Okay.
So we put, we put those in as budget requests, and they, my understanding is that, at least on the city side, they have gotten through the budget office. So I don't know yet where they landed beyond that.
And they're to be jointly funded between the city and the county. Okay. Well, those are clearly of important interest to the county, multimodal transportation and the open space. So that's good. I'm glad they got through on the city side. With the open space plan, is, it's basically going to be a Durham city-county open space plan, correct? Okay. I think that's really important, because we've never had a joint open space plan. So this is a really big deal. Is there any reason we're not calling it a Durham city-county open space plan?
I am happy to do that. We were thinking countywide also encompasses the city, but we can be clear and-
Okay.
-call it a city-county open space plan. We're happy to do that.
Commissioner Valentine might not like me calling it a city-county open space plan. But, anyway, I do want-
Cities and the county.
I do want to recognize, though, that it is not just a Durham county open space plan. It's like, we've never had a whole comprehensive one. Okay. And my last question is, we've heard a lot in different places, the need to expedite development review plans, permitting, inspections. Do you feel like you need more staff or help with that?
So, right now, I feel like we're in a good place to deliver on the expectations that we've had up till now. So we're back to our regular timeframes. We don't have any extended timeframes. I'm going to be working on a series of process improvements with some of the non-land use-related reviewers, so folks in, you know, the transportation, public works particularly on the city side, and in terms of also project inspections. I get a lot of concerns about the timeliness of stormwater control measure inspections and approvals and things like that. So there are a number of things that are on my kind of list for this year to improve. There, I know that there have been, on the city side, some additional staff in those other department units that will hopefully get to that. But I will, I will know better, I don't feel that we need any right now. I feel like the issues that we have to address, there is adequate staffing to do so. It just needs some finessing.
Okay. Well, you'll let us know, even if it's during the year, as we look at process improvement, if there's any need for support. Thank you.
Oh, Commissioner Burton?
Quick question. Thank you. I'm curious about the Emery Woods Estates National Register. Just want to tell a little bit more about that.
Good morning. I'm Scott Whitman with the Planning Department. I guess you did introduce me. So the Emery Woods Estates is something that was actually, the neighborhood was interested in, worked with Preservation Durham, and, and so only the department can get funding through the state historic preservation office. So we're kind of partnering with, with those. So that's why Sarah mentioned, it was a little bit of a surprise. It was kind of a grassroots effort on the neighborhood and our local nonprofit for historic preservation. So we're, we're assisting with them, and we'll manage the contract, but we're expecting a lot of assistance and energy from those folks.
It's a historic neighborhood, and I drove back there maybe a few months ago, and you could just see how new development is kind of encroaching, and you want to protect that historic neighborhood and that land designation. So, thanks a lot.
Yeah, it would also be our first historic district that's more from the 1950s, where most of, most of ours are older than that.
Thank you so much. I just want to know, I already know, I texted Sarah about this last week, but just want to say appreciation to your staff and team. I went into the Planning Department office last week and the week before, for my own personal reasons, and your team was just so sweet and nice. And so just thank you so much for building that culture that makes it pleasant for people to come and ask questions. Our next presentation, the county stormwater update presentation. You have Mr. Ryan Eves will be joining us, and we have 20 minutes set aside for this. Ryan, are you going to follow in Sarah's example? No, if we do 10 and 10, do you think, 20 minutes? All right, so colleagues, let's think of your questions, keep it concise.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Ryan Eves. I'm the Division Manager for Stormwater and Erosion Control in the Engineering and Environmental Services Department. I have Mackenzie Bradshaw, our Stormwater Manager, with me, and I'm happy to introduce Ellie Kenzie, who's our Stormwater Education Specialist today. We just wanted to provide an update to you on some of the activities of county stormwater over the last couple of years, and give you, you know, an idea of the things we've been working on. We're going to start with a brief background, touch on the stormwater utility, and then share a couple of projects and our education and outreach. So, I know some of you have been here through the whole process of our stormwater program, but some of you are new to the water quality requirements we have. Durham County is fortunate enough, or unfortunate enough, to sit in three separate watersheds that all have nutrient management strategies associated with them and their associated rules and costs. Local municipalities and counties are required by state law to abide by these nutrient management strategies that require us to reduce nitrogen and phosphorus in our watersheds, particularly to protect Jordan Lake and Falls Lake, as well as the Neuse River. So like I said, we have three different rules, the Neuse River Basin nutrient strategy, the Falls Lake rules, and the Jordan Lake rules. So how do we do that? We reduce nutrients entering our waterways by requiring new development to meet nutrient requirements on-site, during development, and after development. Then we design stormwater control measures to help treat runoff from existing development. So development that's been on the ground for any number of years that did not have to meet the stormwater requirements that we have now. We can also purchase undeveloped land for land conservation, because conserved land doesn't add any new impervious surface necessarily, and won't add, you know, ideally won't add a lot of new nutrients to the system. We can also retrofit old stormwater measures. Maybe we have a neighborhood that had to do something for flow, had to address the volume of water leaving the property, but they didn't really do anything for nutrients. And so we might be able to go in and retrofit that stormwater control measure to, to improve the water quality leaving the site and reduce- the water quality leaving the site and reduce the nutrients. Just to give you an idea of the costs associated with these rules, for the Neuse River rules, we expected no new costs. We were already abiding by those. We were already complying with them with our activities. We've added some activities and have added the staffing needed to make sure that we're complying with those rules, but there's no associated cost with complying with those rules. For Falls Lake rules, originally, we'd estimated it was going to cost $1 to $2 million. The UNRBA or the Upper Neuse River Basin Association, which you may or may not be familiar with, worked with the state to adopt what's called the Interim Alternative Implementation Approach. Say that five times fast. The IAA, but it's a financial approach to nutrient management that reduced the county's costs, reduced costs across the watershed, and our compliance costs are about $666,000 over the five years of the IAA, which is coming close to an end. Stage two of the Falls rules was estimated to cost about $67 million because we were going to have to reduce the amount of nitrogen and phosphorus 40% and 77% respectively. It was estimated early on that the cost of the stage-two rules to the entire watershed of the Falls Lake would be about $2 billion. Fortunately, those rules are under revision and readoption. UNRBA is playing a significant role in the revision or readoption of those rules to bring down that cost, and we will, you know, be working with UNRBA on what those requirements look like, and we'll know better once the rules readoption process happens. Hopefully by 2027 is the goal. We'll see where we get with the state on that, but that's kind of where that process is headed. Until then, we will stay in this stage-one IAA approach, which again is about $133,000 a year commitment. And Jordan Lake, not nearly the, you know, the cost we saw in Falls Lake, but there are some costs. About $6 million was expected for stage-two. Stage-two is on hold, and the Jordan Lake rules are also under revision and readoption at the state level. So we're going to be mindful of what those requirements look like, and we'll certainly let you know as those costs change. To help fund these, we adopted a stormwater utility fee in FY '20, or FY '21, rather. So right in the middle of the start of the pandemic, we came to the board with our stormwater utility fee. Due to the pandemic, we reduced that fee to about one-third of what we originally were proposing. We bill about 15,000 parcels across the county, and those are parcels only in the county, not inside city limits. About 13,000 of those are residential parcels, and they're billed at a tiered rate. Basically, the larger the house or the more amount of impervious surface on your property, the more you pay. Non-single-family residential, such as commercial industrial properties, pay per the amount of impervious surface on their property. Current fees are about $80 per ERU. An ERU is an equivalent runoff unit. It's equal to 4,300 square feet of impervious surface area. And just so that you're aware, in 2024, a state law was passed that prohibited cities and counties from imposing stormwater utility fees on properties used for bona fide farm purposes or agricultural properties. After we adopted the stormwater utility or during that adoption, we identified four guiding principles for our stormwater program. Rules compliance, obviously, we have to comply with these state rules. Efficiency, we recognize that those stormwater utility dollars are not our money. We want to be as efficient with those as possible and get our best bang for our buck. Resiliency, we seek to address water quality, but also the effects of climate change and flooding in our community. And finally, environmental justice, and where possible, we're prioritizing projects in underserved areas. So after we adopted the utility, we set some guiding principles. We sought to identify projects to meet the rules of the Falls and Jordan rules. We initially identified 15 projects with, working with our consultant team. We narrowed that down to 10 based on a desktop analysis, and then with field visits, we identified six projects. We built a scoring rubric around our guiding principles and then came up with scoring for those six projects. We requested to start with the Neal Middle School project, and that's where we started. At Neal Middle School, a school that was built in the 1920s, just sits off of Highway 98 as you head towards Raleigh, we identified that there was no stormwater treatment on site. And so there was an opportunity there to construct a bioretention pond and vegetate a swale on the property to treat for nutrients. We're proud to say that project is complete, and we're really excited about what we've built there. In association with that project, recognizing that it was on a school campus, we wanted to make it an educational component for the school. And Ellie will talk a little bit more about what we've done with that. But this is a picture of a completed project. We had hoped to have you all out there back on Earth Day, but unfortunately, the thunderstorms had a different idea. We have another date that we're going to talk about in a little bit, and hopefully get on your calendar where you can come and see the work there. And I'm going to turn it over to Mackenzie to talk about another project.
Sure. So another project that is currently in design, but is, we just received 90% design construction plans, is the Whispering Pines Stream Restoration and Bioretention Project. Whispering Pines is a mobile home park. It's in a pretty suburban neighborhood. It is located in the county and also in the Falls Lake watershed, which Ryan identified is obviously one where we need to work to reduce nitrogen and phosphorus. And it existing contains approximately four acres of impervious area that is not treated and on private property. So this is just a rendering for what we'll be doing for the stream restoration part. It's approximately 1,500 feet of stream that currently is in very poor condition. So the project will include enhancements along the banks, stabilizing the banks, vegetation, different structures within the stream to help with the channel of the bed that in some places is just in very poor shape and causing erosion and further endangering the banks of the stream for further erosion down the road. And the project will also work to, they're called benches, install some benches along the stream, which will help in high flows with erosive velocities during storm events. And another part of the project, in addition to the 1,500 square feet of stream restoration, will be a bioretention area. This will be very similar to what Ryan just showed for that, what we just constructed at Neal Middle School. It'll redirect some existing stormwater conveyance that currently is not being treated at all and also contributing to some erosion in the stream to the bioretention with some vegetated swales, and this will help with both nutrient reductions and erosive velocities. And we also intend, and Ellie will discuss a little bit more, on installing educational signage for residents to see and for the public to see. So as far as funding for these two projects we just discussed, the Neal Middle School project was approximately $450,000. We received an EEG grant for 225 to contribute to that. The Whispering Pine Stream Restoration, stream restorations are very expensive. This project will be about $2.1 million. We have already received a couple of grants. We have a Lassie Grant and a Strap Grant, and we have applied for another grant, and we are in the process of applying for another one. So all said and done, we're hoping a little more than $1 million is funded through grants, and the balance remaining will be funded through the stormwater utility fee, which Ryan discussed. Another project that we are currently working on is the Southeast Durham Watershed Improvement Plan. This is the first watershed improvement plan that the county has partnered with the city on and that the county has done. The city has completed, this area will be the last area, and then the city has completed a watershed improvement plan for every watershed located in the city. So this is exciting for us. It's approximately 33 square miles. It is focusing on Lit Creek, Stirrup Iron Creek, and Briar Creek, which I'm sure, as you're aware, we have a lot of development activity in these areas as well. It will assess the watershed health. They've already completed stream assessments. The team has walked about 40 miles of stream that have been identified in these areas to assess the current health, as well as possible areas that will be good for project retrofits, stream restorations, to help better enhance the environment. And I'll hand it over to Ellie to talk about some of our education and outreach.
Hi. So as Ryan and Mackenzie both mentioned, our first-ever stormwater utility fee-funded project is the one at Neal Middle School, so it's that bioretention. As far as that project has gone, we've had a presence at the school pretty much throughout the whole project, so working with administrators and teachers and even getting to interact with students to kind of make them more aware of what the project is, how it's working, and then also what Durham County stormwater does, because not a lot of people are super aware of our division and what we do. So this project has been a really good opportunity to kind of increase that type of awareness and also educate people on stormwater pollution prevention, that type of thing. So if you look at the images here, you can see materials that we've made, including like a little pamphlet that we've handed out and a big sign. So in the bottom corner, that's what that is. That's a sign that's going to accompany the bioretention and be put out so that it can kind of be ongoing and available for students to look at and learn about what the bioretention is and how it works. We're also planning on hosting an open house. So Neal Middle School is having a family day in the evening of Wednesday, May 21st, and we're planning on being present at that to sort of answer people's questions about the bioretention, the project, and then also how we're going to be involved moving forward because we're not planning on just kind of leaving this project as it is. We're going to hopefully work with them to design curriculums and kind of continuously stay involved in making sure that there is an educational component, since this is at a school. Also, you're all invited to that open house. Other projects that we've done include things like Creek Week. So Creek Week is an effort that happens every March. We have a regional version and a Durham version, and there's even statewide efforts that involve just a lot of different types of activities that go on. We've also done Earth Day events, and then if you just look at these images, some examples of things that we've done are the Durham Bulls Education Days, a few different types of school outreach. We've done tabling at farmers' markets and at the Museum of Life and Science. We hosted an educational panel prior to Creek Week that was pretty well-attended, and we even hosted an outdoor critter crawl where kids and adults all got to go out and interact with stream critters in real time and talk to experts and that sort of thing. We've also started a social media presence to hopefully make people a little bit more aware that way and spread information on stormwater and what we do. And we're also just pretty continuously going out to different locations, and we've made a really conscious effort to reach a variety of demographics. So kids, adults, all the different areas kind of within the county and even, you know, in city limits when it's relevant. So just to kind of break down some of the more informational parts of what we've done, this year so far, we've had 13 events, so that's just January through April. That's included trivia nights, school programs, outdoor activities, education days, and our educational panel. Throughout these events specifically, we've reached around 1,322 individuals compared to last year. So my position only started in January of 2024. So in the entire year of 2024, we reached about 2,000 people total. So the fact that we've already reached 1,300 in just the first few months is a really good step forward, and that's only direct in-person education. That doesn't include like outreach materials and that kind of thing. We've also made a lot of connections and partnerships with schools, other organizations, other professionals to kind of keep going with that mission of moving forward and doing these events, and it's been really beneficial because now we have a lot of access moving forward when we want to do more outreach.
We'll get to questions really quick. I want to, I do want to point out that, so the education outreach, while vastly important, and we want to make sure we're educating people on the importance of stormwater management, water quality, it is also required in those rules we talked about. And so, you know, we have, while we had some small things we were doing before, we're really excited to have brought Ellie on board and that position on board to really, as you can see, expand the efforts that we've been making in our department.
Thank you so much. I see you also brought, what do you call it, the storm with you for the presentation? But it really beenning, got special effects. But thank you so much. I know I'm looking forward to rescheduling that, Neil. I saw, I live right by Neal Middle School, so I was like, yeah, just pop on over. Hope of the weather. Grateful for all of the work that you all do. I'm curious of, besides stormwater retention, what they have in like new developments in neighborhoods? You know, those like water retention areas? Are those considered, those are stormwater retention or what, are those different?
Yes and no. So during construction, they're, we call them sediment basins or sediment traps. Those are the things, they're collecting, collecting water and collecting sediment during construction so that doesn't leave the property while they're doing construction. Typically, some of those will go away as the areas are developed, as they're brought to grade or stabilized, and then some of them will likely stay on as permanent stormwater control measures. And that's, you know, what you're going to see of, you know, it could be a bioretention, it could be a wet pond where it's going to hold water at all times, but that's going to control runoff from the site after development and, you know, in perpetuity.
And are there ways that like communities and stuff could partner with your office of like on beautification efforts or like making them more like, not accessible, but like ways that they're part of the community for people to learn and understand about them, and then also they're in the center of their neighborhoods, how to make them actually be, they're already a use, but like, you know, an everyday use to residents?
Sure. I mean, that's more of a, would be a planning kind of during development, maybe planning process. You know, one of our goals has always been, as we build these county-owned stormwater control measures or stream restoration projects, is to add an education component. So like we said, there'll be signage at Neal Middle School. We're working on getting that fabricated now. We'll have signage associated with the stream restoration. That's certainly something that could be done during development. There also are some multi-use opportunities for stormwater control measures where they have some, you know, they might have underground features that provide that filtration, that sequestering of water while also being able to be used as recreational areas or things like that. We certainly can talk, you know, are happy to talk with neighborhoods and find ways that they can, you know, can be of use. There are certainly some safety, you know, concerns, maybe with some of the, you know, some stormwater control measures versus others, but yeah, we could definitely talk with people about that.
I will say, I just wanted to add really, really quick with that. We do have a stormwater hotline that we've created. So if you go on our website, we have a number available that anyone can call, especially if they have like illicit discharge complaints or concerns, but we do get calls sometimes just where people want advice and ideas for issues that they have in their community, and we're always happy to answer those questions with that as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Burton?
Yeah, I'm going to make it real quick. I really appreciate this presentation because you hear about stormwater, stormwater, and how the effects on the environment and things like that. So I just want to say, have two questions. So I appreciate you. Thank you for this presentation. Two questions. The education component, which grade levels have you primarily focused on? Because I really liked your visuals. This is really good.
So with grade levels, we have worked with all ages, right? So our panel was for adults, and then we've done a lot that way. When it comes to school visits, we've primarily done upper elementary school so far. We, I'm able to cater to pretty much any grade level and work around that. So with, we've gotten a lot of summer So with, we've done a lot of summer camps, which have been more kind of like mid-grade levels, you know, like second and third grade, and then visiting schools, we've had a lot of around fifth grade, and the Durham Bulls Education Days, those are usually also upper elementary and middle school age students.
I would like to talk to you more about that because, you know, I'm an educator by heart, will always be. And then the final other question I have is, is it best to let your leaves, when they fall from the tree, just sit on the, you know, just let them sit there? Or is it better to rake them up and send them away?
If you're going to rake them up and send them away, do not put them in the road by the curb. That is, is one of the biggest pollutants and also storm drain issues that we see often is people will rake their leaves and put them next to the street or in the county where we don't have curbs, and they, during a storm event or during a wind event, they will blow into your roadside ditch, clog your driveway culvert, but you're supposed to bag them up, take them off-site appropriately.
I usually just let mines disintegrate into the grass.
That's fine, too. That's fine.
Commissioner Jacobs?
Well, thank you. You guys do amazing work, really great work. Thank you so much, and I'm really excited about the education component that you all are doing, and especially around, you've done several IA/IA projects with Durham Public Schools, and it's really a win-win in that way. I was wondering around the education, are you partnering at all, like with the Betsy Program at Southern High School? Because those are, those students are actually doing bio retention projects, and I see we've got some Soil and Water folks in the back. I mean, that's, we have, I'm sorry, Cooperative Extension, also thinking about the education that's happening at both Cooperative Extension and Soil and Water, too.
Yeah, we tried, I, we tried so hard to get the plants for the bio retention at Neil Middle with Betsy. We just could not make the schedule work. You know, that was our goal, our intended goal was to use, work with them to get the plants. We just could not get it to work within the schedule of construction. There were construction issues, as I think there always are with any project like this, and timing just didn't quite work out. But our goal is obviously to work within all the county resources. You know, I think we've had some, some high-level conversations with Cooperative Extension and trying to reach, find ways we can collaborate. I do think we've, you know, Ellie has done a great job of building those relationships so that we can continue to work more and more with, you know, both Soil and Water, Cooperative Extension, DPS. You know, we want to make those connections. We certainly are, you know, doing our best to make them.
Right, thank you. Also, great job on the grant funding that you've gotten, and I was wondering, related to IA/IA, I know we're going to be talking about the farm campus after lunch, is that a potential IA/IA project?
I believe so. I mean, land conservation in itself would be, is eligible under, you know, the IAA as it's currently written. We've had some conversations about as, you know, those projects develop, whether it's the farm campus, Orange Factory, Santee Road projects, building, making sure that green infrastructure, green stormwater infrastructure is a part of those projects, and so those would all be IAA-eligible. You know, we'll see what the kind of phase or stage two of the falls looks like. I will say, between the, between what we've already committed to Neil Middle, the Southeast Durham Watershed Improvement Plan, and Whispering Pines, we have met and exceeded our IAA requirements for stage one. It is my understanding in conversations with the state that previously spent dollars are, they are looking at making those eligible for stage two, and so, you know, we will not, we're not just going to sit, rest on our laurels of these projects. We want to continue to make sure we're improving water quality and, and meeting, you know, meeting those requirements, and all the more reason why we're seeking these grant funds now is because they're available. We know grant funding is somewhat questionable these days, so when the grants come across, you know, become available, we're going after them as best we can.
Fantastic. And just to let our, our board know, in terms of trying to make sure the county isn't on the hook for sixty, more than sixty million dollars, both Ryan and I are very involved with the Upper Neuse River Basin Association's efforts to make sure the Falls Lake rules are changed and new rules are adopted. Ryan serves as treasurer and I'm chair of the UNRBA, so we, we are working hard on that. The stormwater hotline, I didn't know about that. That's fantastic if we can make sure we really county-wide promote that. I also want to thank you, Ryan, for your responsiveness around when there are concerns from citizens around stormwater runoff, especially in East Durham. Your, your team, you all are always very responsive. Is there any opportunity for, and I know this has come up before, to focus on kind of pre-development and during development around protecting soil and preservation of soil, because that's what we see happening a lot in East Durham, is actually the soil particles getting into the water, and also compression of the soil during development, which is not good for onsite infiltration?
Right, so, yes, you know, we are constantly trying to educate contractors, engineers, developers on, you know, some of the new requirements. We have for erosion control, which is, you know, where we are interacting with projects during development, and we're doing that throughout the city and the county. You know, we're continually looking to educate and make sure that driving, you know, flocculence are one thing, I won't, you know, go do a deep dive into that, those are certainly helpful, but the biggest thing we can do is ground cover, ground cover, ground cover. If we can get sites, making sure they're getting their, you know, areas to grade and then they're getting them covered up, whether it's, you know, with temporary seed and straw and soil matting, even mulch and things like that, they're going to hold that dirt in place. That's going to be, you know, be integral to protecting our water quality, integral to limiting that turbid runoff that, that we know we all hear about, tomato soup. I'm sure you're familiar with, with hearing about that, particularly in Southeast Durham. We are working on and hopefully planning to put together kind of a contractor workshop, I think a Durham-focused one, that's something we, you know, is on my to-do list. I've talked a little bit with Ellie about helping us put that together. Dr. Rich McLaughlin at NC State and his group do regular workshops, they do them twice a year for turbidity control in construction sites. He asked me to come and talk about our local experience at the one in October, and I'm actually going to do the one next week, and he's asked me to come and speak about the kind of local government experience there with, along with one of my colleagues at Wake County. So we are, we're trying to do that. I think that another thing that will help is getting the state to recognize, and I'm drawing a complete blank on it, I've done at the soil amendments as a stormwater practice, where you're adding organic material to onsite soils to make them better infiltrate. The, you know, currently that's not an approved practice at the state level, but that's something that the UNRBA has pushed to try to, to try to add to the, add to the, the guide for stormwater control measures, and I think that would do wonders in helping infiltration of stormwater as well as treat for nutrients.
Thank you. Really appreciate all the things that you all are really leading on. And my last question is, how has that state law, SL twenty-twenty-four, I forget the whole thing?
Agricultural?
Yeah. How, how has that impacted us in terms of our stormwater revenues?
For FY twenty-five, it was about a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar impact approximately. And then, you know, going forward, depending on, it would be about the same if we keep the rates the same. We have proposed another increase in rates. I don't have the math off the top of my head, but for FY twenty-five, it was about a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar impact.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobs. Commissioner Valentine?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Ryan, thank you for your presentation today, and thank you for highlighting tomato soup. I'm quite familiar with what you're referring to. And also, thank you for the project that you're currently conducting around Lit Creek. Can you tell us how your work is being impacted by the large numbers of projects that are currently going on in Southeast Durham, in East Durham? How's that impacting your work?
Keeps us busy. So we have, you know, Mackenzie and Ellie are our stormwater staff, we have a GIS analyst as well, and then we have an erosion control supervisor and four erosion control technicians who are the ones that are doing those inspections on active construction sites. We have about three hundred permitted projects right now. I don't know the number currently in that southeastern Durham area, but most of the projects are dealing with similar or the same soils. About eighty percent of those projects have the underlying triassic soils, which are those, are those red, tiny red, you know, slits, clays that have very fine particles that do not, you know, do not quickly settle out of the water column, and so lead to that, you know, lead to that turbidity, that, that tomato soup color we're seeing in streams. But, you know, the, the development activity, you know, the increased activity particularly in Southeast Durham, you know, it keeps us busy. You know, we have somebody out in that area of the county probably at least every week. You know, our goal is to inspect all of our sites once a month. We hit about eighty percent of our sites once a month, mainly because of the number of sites we have. You know, we have three hundred sites, five regular, you know, full-time staff who are doing inspections, but we know, we certainly prioritize some of those sites in Lit Creek. In Southeast Durham, we prioritize larger sites and new sites. We want to get sites started, you know, on, on, on a good foot. And so it's challenging, and it keeps our guys busy. You know, we try to work with and we're trying to educate contractors on the use of flocculence, on a ground cover issue, getting them, you know, getting ground cover, getting areas stabilized as fast as they can is, is key. Unfortunately, we also have the challenges of some of the state laws that, you know, limit what we can do. You know, we can only require ground cover to be, depending on slope, to be placed within seven or fourteen or twenty-one days by state law. And so essentially, if an area of a site is, you know, being actively worked, they're not having to put down that ground cover maybe for two weeks. At the same time, we're only maybe seeing a site once a month, so it's, it's challenging to say, okay, you're done here, clock starts, because maybe they, maybe they were done, you know, two or three weeks ago, but we couldn't get back to that site. So we kind of are trying to, you know, stay on top of that as best we can.
And I would just add, as Ryan said, we aim to inspect sites once a month, but if a site is not in compliance or under an NOV, we have re-inspections, so we are out there usually more than one time a month, every two weeks maybe, if they're currently under a violation.
Thank you, and I can appreciate the challenges that you have, and a lot of people in our community, quite frankly, are counting on you.
Thank you. Commissioner Brennan?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, where's the Whispering Pines Mobile Hole Park? What part of Durham County? It's in eastern, southeastern?
It is, it's in southeastern Durham. It's off of Lynn Road, just kind of south of ninety-eight. It's in, it is in the Little Lake Creek Watershed.
Thank you all so, so much for doing your critical, this critical work for Durham County. We appreciate you a ton.
Thank you.
We are going to take a, if the board is okay with a working lunch? Are you good with a working lunch, everyone? Commissioner Jacobs and Valentine, are you okay with working lunch? Okay, so we'll take a ten-minute break for everyone to go use the bathroom, grab their lunch, come back, and we'll get started at twelve-twenty.
And our next presentation that we have scheduled is 25-0166 Durham County Farm Campus Feasibility Study and Discussion. We have 45 minutes scheduled for this. Donna, do you think 25 minutes presentation, 20 minutes questions? Okay, perfect.
So, I should say, good afternoon, Commissioners and County Manager. We are really excited to be here today to talk about the feasibility study final presentation, because it represents both the culmination of work and also the beginning of some new work and new directions. So, we're really excited about that. I'm Donna ReWalt, I'm the County Extension Director. With me here today is Derek Fleming with HRNA Advisors, who led our consultant team on the feasibility study. John Little, our Agriculture Agent for Small Farms and Local Foods, is here with us. And online, Marina Goldstein-Benug, our County Food Security Coordinator, is with us as well. She is actually attending the National Anti-Hunger Policy Conference in Washington DC, apparently with a lot of other Durham folks. That's hosted by the Food Research and Action Center. So, we're excited that she's able to hop on. We're gonna start by me just saying a couple of things briefly about the farm campus kind of background, where we've been, why we're here today. Then I'm gonna turn it over to Derek to walk through the full feasibility study. Of course, this study is also informed by the earlier community engagement portion of this study that was conducted by Cospera that we also reported to you all back in 2024. So, the general, kind of our operating mission for Farm Campus, based on our conversations with all of you and, and the initial aspects of the study, is that the Durham County Farm Campus aims to be a welcoming, accessible, culturally farming, and safe space that promotes sustainable agricultural practices, environmental stewardship, food access equity, and economic prosperity. You'll hear more about the Farm Campus components, but just to kind of remind you about what they are. Probably the primary one you think of when you think of Farm Campus is the incubator farm program, which is the aspect that, where we could have individuals come and farm and get access to land on the property, and also learn how to farm and have an opportunity possibly at some point to have their own farm. The post-harvest food education facility, having a teaching and classroom space to educate and also to process what happens on farm, whether we're talking about cleaning those items or turning them into other types of value-added products. Shared kitchen space, so that could be both commercial kitchen space, similar to the Piedmont Food Processing Center, which we have a very large shortage of in our community, as well as some teaching kitchen space for, for continuing education, both for the Farm Campus but also for the larger community. And also a healing garden, which is an aspect that could be incorporated at any point and place on, on the property to allow people to connect with nature and find a peaceful spot away from the hubbub of our urban environment. Some of the key milestones. So, this is a conversation that's been a long time in the making. So, if any of you feel like this hasn't been a while, it has been a little while. So, just to kind of give you some points in time. In 2011, Durham County collaborated with Alamance, Chatham, and Orange Counties to help launch the Piedmont Food Processing Center, which is located in Orange County. And if it's, and it might be something that I think some of you who, who don't know about would be interested in visiting. I think it'll give you a really good perspective on some of the types of things that we do need in Durham County and as part of this project. Also, the Durham County Farmland Protection Board became very interested in the idea of a Farm Campus and established a Farm Campus Working Group that included people like our friends who are here today from open space, from Swollen Water, from Cooperative Extension, and others who are interested in the idea of how do we get more access to land and help people get engaged in farming. Our Farm Campus Working Group identified the need for a feasibility study. You know, we can't talk forever, we've got to actually do something. At that same time, Durham County and North County Cooperative Extension collaborated on an additional agriculture agent for small farms and local foods, which is occupied today by, by John Little. And then, in 2021, Durham County hired its first Food Security Coordinator, which certainly was aligned with what happened during the pandemic and community requests for such coordination from the county. In 2022, we secured the grant with USDA, which is part of the Urban Agriculture and Innovation Production Grant Program. And then, in 2023 and 2024, we worked on, first of all, contracting with our consultants and doing the community engagement portion. And at the same time, lo and behold, I think all of you now know we do own some property on Orange Factory Road that will serve the purpose for Farm Campus as well as a much broader environmental, natural resource purpose for the whole county. And then, of course, today, we are here for our final feasibility study. And of course, earlier today, you heard about the next steps with the capital improvement process for the entire property. And so, this, this study does help inform some of those next steps, as well as, the study is also being provided to Swollen Water for the farmland protection plan that is being developed at this time. So, I'm gonna turn this over to Derek and let him take the plunge.
Thank you very much. Yes, thank you for having me today. Very excited to be here. It's been fantastic to work with Donna and John and Marina and the team over at Cooperative Extension through this process. It's been incredibly rewarding, and we're excited to be at the stage we are today. So, I'm gonna talk to you, I know you have the report there with you, but I'm gonna walk you through some of the higher points, more tangible, exciting milestones that we, we're in our process for achieving and producing the feasibility study. A little bit about myself and our firm. HRNA is a real estate advisory economic development and policy firm. We are national in scope, we do work across the globe. I lead, as a senior advisor partner of the firm, I lead our cultural capital practice at the firm, which is about the overlap of real estate, placemaking, and leveraging history and culture within our work. It really is about historically marginalized communities having a space for their centered equity and justice. So, a lot of my work builds on my history as an entrepreneur in hospitality and the food-related business, as well as real estate development. So, a little bit about Farm Campus. It's, I think it's important to underscore that the ambition of Farm Campus is really to propel Durham forward toward a resilient food system that systematically addresses the root causes of food security as it seeks to uplift the next generation through increased access to land, infrastructure, and new markets as a beginning for new farmers in the Durham area. It's also to nurture racial equity and the development in generational wealth by centering diverse communities and their priorities and empowering space for historically underserved farmers, as defined by the USDA. So, our process for initiating and executing the study was conducted in three distinct work streams. The initial work stream was all about site selection, looking at, we used a scorecard, which we delivered to the commission to help you understand the criteria in which we were understanding the best site for Farm Campus. And then the next endeavor was really developing a design and a programmatic plan for the site, looking at what different types of programmatic elements would be most beneficial to the community based on some of the community engagement that we were having throughout the entire process and understanding workforce opportunities, educational opportunities, practitioner training opportunities, and also the incubator program, really sort of as a highlight for how burgeoning farmers could become more seasoned farmers throughout this process. So, the design was in the physical, the design development phase was both physical as well as programmatic. It's also important to note that the community engagement process, as I, as I mentioned, was a through line. So, it informed all of the various work streams that we were engaged, engaged in with Cospero throughout the entire process. The last work stream was about implementations, where we worked closely with Cooperative Extension in putting together guidelines, steps, ideas for how to move forward practically, but also looking at potential issues and risks that might show up for Farm Campus and how we might mitigate those risks. So, we went through a process of outlining issues and challenges that may be presented and how to work around those issues. We also presented a 10-year operating budget that really gave a picture for, based on cases, what would be needed to keep Farm Campus going in an operational standpoint over a 10-year period. And then, looking at those cases to inform, you know, how operations, governance, management, different programming would be best applied here in Durham, based on Durham's unique set of circumstances. So, this is really the sort of the full through-line process in which we conducted the study. As our team, along with, so here you, you know, you see the, the depth of work in which our partner, Cospero, engaged in community engagement. There were 60 focus groups, over 100 surveys. You know, if you look at the report, you'll see that this was done in a way that really centered the voices and lifted up folks who are going to be impacted potentially and will benefit from this effort of Farm Campus. It was thorough, it was comprehensive, and this report really is informed by those voices and by those, those sets of input. And it's, it's really an objective. If you, if you read the report, you'll, you'll hear some of the objective concerns that the community voiced in terms of what they're looking for out of Farm Campus and really the opportunity to lift up those practitioners through this Farm Campus development. So, here you see the Farm Campus as it was selected. We, you know, again, we talked about the scorecard and the process in which we involved you in looking at the selection for Farm Campus. So, this is, we started off at 10 sites, and then eventually narrowed it down to four sites based on the specific criteria and programming that are important to seeing the, the program come to fruition. And then in November, we finally selected, you acquired the site, and now we're here today with a site that we can program and work on and build from. So, the vision for Farm Campus, as you see it here, is, is coming to life. We're in phase zero, we're at the beginning stages of, of what Farm Campus can and will be. You'll see that it includes, you know, the program and the various site uses includes farming plots, educational quadrants, storage facilities, and other uses. Truly, this 129-acre site features large swaths of arable land on the site with a history of agricultural uses. So, this is really a, a site that's positioned and ready for the type of use that Farm Campus is gonna bring to it. It's located in North Durham. For those of you who are, you know, still sort of learning about it, it's located in North Durham. And the site features attributes that allow for positive collaborations with other county-related institutions and organizations. The size of the campus is convenient and in proximity to downtown. And it also is adjacent to parcels that are, the Triangle Land Conservancy is connected to and, and will sort of be a part of the building of recreational and conservation uses for the site. There's ponds, woodlands, all sorts of natural amenities that are positioned, again, to sort of help the programming of Farm Campus come to life. The site is located within the urban growth boundary. So, previous development on the site really suggests that the feasibility of additional development over time is quite feasible for the project. feasible for the project. So as we talk about this initial stage, how Farm Campus is coming to life as we sit in first, the first phase, phase zero, year zero to one, we look at the purpose and sort of the initial measured pace in which we're going to approach Farm Campus. And it's really about continuing the site's preparations, looking at sort of the existing conditions and how those can be managed and thought through, and designing and launching community activations such that the community can further understand the opportunity that's going to come through their engagement with Farm Campus, as well as ongoing community engagement. The conversation about what Farm Campus can be and should be has to be ongoing. It's not static. We're going to continue to learn what the best opportunity is for Farm Campus moving In years one through three, we'll see Farm Campus enlist basic safety and access upgrades. The community activations will start to ramp up. The incubator program, the educational mentorship program where burgeoning farmers are working closer with sort of less seasoned farmers, that will start to take shape as plots are designated. And then temporary parking and infrastructure will also be set in motion in this phase, years one through three, for Farm Campus. In years four through six, there'll be an expansion of that incubator program for beginning farmers. Physical upgrades will be made to the site, and the educational programming of Farm Campus will really start to take shape and unfold during this phase. In years seven through 10, we'll see Farm Campus fully being realized, a holistic site, a well-integrated and fully operational facility with the trails, with the education, with the food service program, with the kitchen, the shared space, with the healing garden. In years 10, seven through 10, we feel that Farm Campus will be there, given all of the careful planning and following the implementation plan. Parking and the healing garden will also be in place at that point. So our feasibility study really includes a detailed set of benchmarks, prioritization, and thoughtful sequencing used in preparing this site, incorporating farmers intentionally, authentically, and practitioners across the food service board. We're building up Farm Campus to be a place that is fully organized, that's well-staffed, the administration and the governance structure is well in place, and we'll be building up the important partnerships in the process of forming Farm Campus throughout the region and continuing to tell the powerful, community-centered story of Farm Campus in an ongoing way. Here we go. So here you'll see the organizational chart, which really outlines the way that we have been thinking through with County Extension around governing Farm Campus. It's not meant to be a hierarchical structure. It really is meant to be something that is dynamic and fluid, that allows the community-based organizations as well as Cooperative Extension staff and technical partners' expertise to be brought in and in a dynamic basis that informs each other as the process for Farm Campus development realizes itself. You'll see that the Cooperative Extension staff, who hire and support the campus staff, work in alignment with the steering committee, which is made up of local farmers, food entrepreneurs, and local leaders. The technical experts, who are also at the table, will be advising on local development decisions, university, educational alliances that may present themselves, and other community-based advisors to keep Farm Campus relevant and moving forward and evolving. Here you see our proposed operating budget for how Farm Campus, again, over that 10-year period, can operate efficiently and sustainably. These figures and numbers were taken from various cases that we've looked at across the country for similar square lot sizes, acreage sizes, and operational endeavors. We've taken, you know, that programming and overlaid it with the vision of what Farm Campus here in Durham could look like and matched those budget figures conservatively for Farm Campus here. You'll see that it's, again, rolled out in phases such that the farm manager and the administration of the Farm Campus are rolled out first, and then later, the programmatic operating, sort of the kitchen and the healing garden spaces, food facility spaces are then rolled out in later phases per the budget. Again, we went through a very, very deliberate process of thinking through with County Extension what some of the potential challenges, obstacles, and difficulties might be for Farm Campus, and really detailed, and you'll see that in the report, outlined what, you know, what the best way would be to mitigate those both endogenous and exogenous issues that might face Farm Campus over its development pattern. And what sort of the overarching approach that we took to putting these mitigation measures together was making sure that there was always a constant dialogue between community and administration, governance, making sure that county leadership was always at the table in understanding how they could participate and support Farm Campus and that staff and the relevant folks who were brought in to manage Farm Campus were seasoned, trained, experienced individuals, and that the community was always a part of the dialogue about how Farm Campus should be realized and how it could be realized in an equitable way, such that voices that are historically marginalized were brought to the table as Farm Campus develops. So when we look at where we are today, next steps, it's very exciting to be here with you. Part of our next steps is this, is sharing the results of the feasibility study, the viability of this incredible opportunity for Durham, sharing those findings with you, but then moving forward and sharing the findings more broadly with the community who's been involved in this engagement process for over a year, maintaining the momentum of what's been established here through Farm Campus in terms of looking at potential low-hanging fruit activations and programming that can happen, just to keep people excited, the mission and the intent behind Farm Campus, keep it alive and uppermost in people's minds. To recruit the steering committee, that would be a part of the governance structure in helping to advise on the decision-making as Farm Campus moves forward. To bring on a farm manager at some point to help sort of think about how this is all going to be administered and brought to fruition on a day-to-day basis, working with County Extension. And to think about funding sources in our unpredictable environment, which we find ourselves now, where last year, funding sources could have been coming from another place. We have to think more creatively about how that can happen. So starting to look at those other opportunities that could potentially fund Farm Campus in an ongoing way. And as Donna mentioned, we're at transition point now where the County Capital Improvement Process Framework has really sort of taken, you know, come into and merged with this effort of Farm Campus, such that consultants have been selected and the process for building out Farm Campus from that vertical, the County Capital Improvement Process, is now underway as well. So we're very excited to be here, and we look to work to having more discussion with you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. It's been like a year, over a year now since we bought the Farm Campus, so I'm excited to see, yeah, this presentation coming to us because we were all very excited, the previous ward, to purchase this property, so to now see the vision that we had all hoped for, you know, becoming more solidified. I had one question really about, to be honest, just transit and the access to the Farm Campus because, you know, we want it to be a space that, you know, is equitable for all of our residents to be able to, you know, participate in the programming that exists there. During the feasibility study, was there a look at, you know, in conversations with our transit director, Ellen, of when we could get transportation out to that area or how?
Yeah, one of the, that was an issue, a concern that was brought up in the process. You know, there were a number of criteria that we looked at in terms of the site itself, its proximity to downtown, its proximity to the sort of the readiness of the site, how it could expand, how it could grow, and transit was definitely a consideration as a part of that criteria. What was envisioned was that, you know, we would sort of work with, in the implementation process, work with the transit agencies here in Durham to look at expansion of some of the transit verticals to Farm Campus, as well as shuttles. We talked about there being a shuttle program that could get practitioners and people who are sort of participating in Farm Campus to and from the site. So that is, that has been under consideration and thought in terms of accessibility, but we knew that it was something that we could address as Farm Campus unfolded in its earliest phases.
For me, I'd love to see it be like added into the plan of where it would be phased in, like in year one, year two, or which year you would see us being able to have a more solidified, like, public transit plan to the Farm Campus. And I think that's something that I want us to look at, at the city, county, holistically about what we have, especially as there's conversations about expanding more spaces and building more spaces in Durham, of all of these amazing resources, how accessible is it to all of our Durham County residents? So making sure this is accessible, the stadium, the museum of life and science, all of these spaces that we have, getting buses so that our youth especially can reach it as well. Okay, I'll bring it to the board. Vice Chair, Dr. Lee.
Can we go back to the operational budget slide? Oh, yeah, all right. So can you talk to me about the growth in personnel? What is the plan? These are, I'm just looking at the, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just curious of what the staffing plan is because the, like, the benefit move does not equate to the salary move, so I'm not really sure what the numbers are. It's not, it's like, the ratio looks a little different here. Like, for example, for salary, year nine to year 10, you have 268 and then 276, right? That's $8,000, right? And I'm just curious, like, what's the staff growth for $8,000?
Yeah, so each of these staff line items is broken out into each of the individuals who'll be working on Farm Campus. There's farm manager, there's the caretaker, there's different roles, and there's a cost-of-living adjustment that's allocated to each of these respective years. So that's where you see the modest jump. It might, at a certain point, staffing will be static. There'll be four people.
Four, okay. That was what I was asking, how many? So it's all the way across for?
There is another slide here. So here's a little more of the details. So this is also in our packet that breaks out the positions. We also, you know, in our iterative conversations with HRNA, you know, like, for example, the county already has a financial apparatus, right? So like, a lot of these organizations, if they run as independent organizations, they also need a financial person, right? We don't need that. So there were some lower costs realized because the county has a structure that this project can fit into. So it breaks down a little bit into the different, and they use some, they looked at some of our local rates, but also some of the comparison studies too. So we had a lot of conversations about salaries and ways we could, you know, save funds.
I'm not questioning salaries. That's not what I was here for. I was just asking about the number. And there's four, and that's all we feel we need going out to 10 years to manage this? That's what, I mean, I'm serious, there's going to be volunteers, I get that.
Yeah, I mean, based on the growth that we see, the projection for growth for Farm Campus over the initial 10 years, this is what we feel would be sufficient, again, leveraging some of the resources from Extension. But if there is more robust growth that happens, then, you know, that would then necessitate, you know, further staffing.
And I think also too, like, when we start talking about a building, so for example, if some of our staff moved to that, right, moved to that building, you know, so we have, you know, we're, there are some unknowns, you know, in terms of when those things come online. So if the county did move forward with having a building, there might actually be some existing staffing that then moves to that space. So that would change. And there are staff probably in multiple departments who would have some different roles. There probably would need to be some contracts, there could be some need for ongoing maintenance contracts or other things that are kind of more incorporated in some of those maintenance operating cost areas as well. So everything may or may not have to be done with staff. Also, as a working farm, the farmers also do a lot of work, so.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jacobs.
Thank you. Great presentation, super exciting. I'm wondering, you know, as we look at this, how we're going to implement this in terms of the operational and the capital costs, are we going to look at what will the funding models be? Because when I looked at the examples that you gave, what really popped out to me was the Good Hope Farm in Cary, and it seems like they're able to pull in some different revenue sources, like doing a CSA or selling to restaurants. But, because, you know, realistically, we're going to face challenges with all of the operational and capital costs. So I just wondered, when do you feel like they'll be kind of digging down into how we're going to be able to fund this? And what are some other, and I noticed they also work with the Piedmont Conservation Council. They seem to have a lot of different partners that they had pulled in to their project, and I didn't know how much discussion there had been with the county manager. I assume there'll be some budget request increase associated with this, but that's just one of my concerns, is how are we going to actually make this happen?
Yeah, we do think that, you know, again, when we initiated this process, we were operating in a different environment than what we see ourselves today. And so we are, our firm, what I'm doing, is very much working with mission-driven foundations, philanthropic organizations that are extremely excited about the type of work that you're doing here in Durham. And it really is about engaging them and, you know, availing them of their support for endeavors that you're undergoing here. So we do know that there are resources that will avail themselves, but that's really the next step, considering the environment that we see ourselves in, how we can bring those resources to bear.
And we certainly have talked about this. Obviously, we had expected to apply for this next step USDA grant that we no longer believe will exist, so we won't be looking, we will be looking to some new sources. You know, I think one of the nice things that this report does is it kind of gives you some of the foundational costs. So for example, if you have a farm manager on site, right, who can do a lot of things and organize people and work with people, we can get a lot of things done and work done with that one person. For example, we can actually run a program if we have a farm manager. So there are some lower hanging fruit and some things that maybe over time will not cost as much. It may mean that the program scales up a little bit more slowly. I do know, so, you know, the town of Cary contracts with some of these organizations in lieu of running this themselves because they don't have any agricultural apparatus in the town of Cary to do that. So they have kind of had a contracting approach. They also do events, so they have events where people come and visit. So one of the exciting things, I think, about the larger aspect of this property and the capital process is that we could have this really, you know, community-engaged property where we could have events, where we could have things that bring people out to walk a trail and to experience a farm. And, you know, we can think of some other creative ways where we can, where we may be able to raise funds through community events as well. But we are definitely rethinking some of those possibilities. You know, there's, Cooperative Extension, we know there's a lot we can do with a little bit, but we can't do it with nothing, right? So we do know that. So we do know that. And so we are looking at other sources. I have met with John Kiefer also on several occasions already. And so we've kind of queued up a couple, we don't want to share too much yet because we're kind of like talking through some possibilities and places that really are already aligned. I mean, one of the cool things about the Farm Campus approach is there's a lot of touch points. So there's, you know, there's the sustainability and environmental aspects of this, there's the agricultural aspect, all of these things intersect as well as the economic development pieces. So I think there's a lot of sources, a lot of funders that are gonna find this type of work compelling. And so, you know, I think we are having to do some rethinking, you know, of course.
But it seems like we first step is we're gonna need a farm, somebody, just a full-time person working on it.
Yeah, it will take that because we do have staff who will be able to support some of the, so I think, so for example, we have staff like John and other people on staff, people that we work with in Swol Water and other departments who could do some educational things, right? But we will, and we can bring in the universities, but we will need some other ways of doing that. We certainly are gonna look at other partnerships with the university, other projects, and different ways of looking at funding. But right now, they're in the same boat, we are, you know, where they're kind of having to rethink what this looks like as well.
Yeah. Okay, well, great, I'm glad to know you're all obviously thinking about this issue. And I just wanted, I read the report and I just want to make sure we don't, I know you listed, like, universities as being partners, and obviously, like, there's the Duke Farm Campus and things like that. But I want to make, and I'm sure it's implied, but I just still want to point out the importance of partnering with Durham Public Schools, right? I mean, they've got the Hub Farm, they've got high school ag programs, so just to be explicit about that. And also, I want to just really highlight that, and I'm sure you're, it's again implied, but, and I know you all do this with your programming anyway, cooperative extension, but the financial planning and budgeting for farmers, because from my experience being on the farmland board, like, that's really key. You know, farmers are small business people, and if we want them to be sustainable and all that, that just seems like that's gonna be key. Is that something that is expected to be part of the programming and the work?
I think so, and it certainly showed up in the case studies as well.
Yeah, the technical assistance and the educational component is a huge part of the incubator program as well as the early start farmer program. So understanding operations, understanding marketing, understanding sources, understanding financial management, all of those elements of being both a practitioner as well as an entrepreneur in the farming industry will be addressed as a part of the curriculum at Farm Campus.
Great, and the last thing I just wanted to mention too, which is also part of your shop anyway, but us really making sure we are including, like, our refugee and immigrant communities, the Latinx community as well, you know, a lot of times with, we've seen this in a lot of refugee and immigrant communities, like, I know this happened in Orange County where, like, the Hmong farmers and just, a lot of times, people come here with skills. And being able to not only use their skills, but also grow their, the food that they've also been growing in their own countries can be a really important source of resiliency. So I just want to highlight, I didn't see any mess, you know, I don't know if there had been outreach specifically to immigrants or refugees in this work or the Latinx community, but I didn't, I just wanted to mention that.
And that's more represented in the Cuspera report from the community engagement study. So we specifically, we did some sessions in Spanish. They are harder communities to have conversations with. We include, we did involve NIO, our immigrant refugee affairs coordinator as well. So those are definitely target communities, also veterans and others. And also speaking back to your point about Durham Public Schools, you know, we already collaborate extensively with them with the Hub Farm. And I think, you know, when you think about Northern Durham County and you think about the existence of the Hub Farm, you know, the operation at Ucan and this project, we really see the potential as of a really robust agriculture ecosystem where someone who maybe has experience at one of those other places gets to come to a larger space where they get access to land. And so we're very excited about that possibility and have had conversations, of course, and they were all involved in that engagement process as well.
Great, thank you so much.
Yes, so thank you for your presentation here this afternoon. Yes, in fact, it's the afternoon. And I think I speak for the new members of the board, Madam Chair, that we're equally as excited in the county's investment in the farm, the Farm Campus. I also want to acknowledge some of the challenges that I think, particularly in this environment, that we will face around funding and the challenges with getting people back and forth, as Chair Lam had noted with regards to transportation. However, our proximity to Person County, Orange County, and Granville County makes me hopeful that this is one of the most highly frequented locations in the northern part of the county. I'm looking forward to activities and programming that will draw people to the farm. And I'm particularly excited about the revenue potential that you described. And so I'm looking forward to next steps in seeing how our board can help in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you so much, I look forward to us having this continued conversation. Thank you. Our next item. On the agenda is presentation on the final recommended FY26 Durham Annual Transit Work Program. I know this one will probably be one that we have more questions on, and we have 30 minutes allocated. How much time do you all think you need for the presentation portion? To get through all the slides? 20 minutes, okay. Yeah. Okay, then I'm gonna ask our commissioners, because we have 30 minutes allocated for this, this is a long presentation, we're probably gonna go over on this one. So maybe try to get within the 20 minutes if you can for presentation. But for our board, a reminder again to be concise with comments and questions. Try to get to the question as quick as possible and leave the comments for an email.
All right, I'll get started. Good afternoon, commissioners. So we're pleased to present the final recommended work program. We have a team here to present and answer questions. I'm Ellen Beckman, Transportation Director for Durham County. Brandy Minor is the Durham County Senior Administrative Officer and the Staff Working Group Administrator. Curtis Garpignato over there, making his debut, Durham County Transportation Planner. Steve Schlossberg from Go Triangle, the Tech District Administrator. Austin Stanyan from Go Triangle, I'm not sure your title.
Regional Technology Project Manager.
Regional Technology Project Manager. And Sean Egan from the City of Durham, Transportation Director. And we have other fans and supporters in the background too. So the work program is the annual budget for the Durham County Transit Plan. The purpose is to advance the projects from that long-range plan. The long-range plan was adopted in 2023. This is a state-required plan. So unlike a lot of budget processes, this is supposed to be in line with a long-range plan. The annual budget is adopted by the Durham County Board of Commissioners and the Go Triangle Board of Trustees. I want to just recognize real quick the two critical staff here, Steve and Brandy. Brandy's the Staff Working Group Administrator, so she helps organize all this information. And the document before you entails, you know, many hours of her time and work editing and reviewing it. And she holds countless meetings with our sponsors to get the details right. And then Steve is critical for managing the funding and making sure that we can afford everything. So this is a team effort, obviously, by the team we have before you. And I, you know, we have four, four members of the Staff Working Group representing Go Triangle, Durham County, the MPO, and the City of Durham. And I want to make sure to emphasize that, you know, Go Triangle and the City of Durham implement the majority of these projects, right? They're critical to the implementation of our transit plan. And, you know, we know they put a lot of effort and work into the projects and the services, and we couldn't do it without them. At the same time, there are, there is a big importance on improving the transparency of how the funding is being spent, providing more accurate information to these boards and to the public, and being accountable to how the funding is being spent, making sure we're doing what we said we were gonna do. Sometimes that does create conflict, and, you know, with this kind of team approach, we don't have a, you know, we don't have one entity in charge of all of this. We all have to work together. I do want to, I guess, acknowledge that your engagement on this, when the draft was presented in February, and in response to your comments, there were many changes made to the final work program. And it was unanimously recommended for approval by the Staff Working Group in April. Just for some general context here, we have a lot of initiatives funded by this plan. And unfortunately, everything is increasing in cost, right? Or funding that we thought was gonna be there may not be there. So I want to just make sure you all understand the greater context of this annual budget. Enhancing and extending bus service was a major priority of the plan. We've been able to do that for the most part. This work program funds that aggressively and even advances projects sooner than what they were planned. But if there's more needs out there, we are running out of planned funds. Capital projects, you know, most capital projects have increased in cost significantly. It's somewhat routine for projects to double in cost. And that may be both due to things outside of our control, like inflation and tariffs and stuff like that, but also due to scope increases. So we have that going on with several of these projects. Grants and shared funding. We have been fortunate to receive federal funding for many projects in the past few years. And some of our future projects are dependent upon the anticipation of federal funding. There's a lot of uncertainty right now with that. We also have some projects where we assumed a local funding share. And in some of those projects, the local funding has not been identified. Fair support and operating subsidies. So this was not in the 23 plan, but it's emerged as a desire. And this work program does fund everything that has been requested through our process. But if there's a desire for more, that's something we need to consider because it's not, it wasn't in the original plan. And, you know, the amount that we want to prioritize that needs to be determined and guided by the governing boards. And then lastly, quick and reliable connections. So this is the pot of funds for those long-term, big capital projects. When this funding source was approved in 2011, that was a major emphasis of this funding source. And it is still a desire from the stakeholders and the public. These projects take a long time and a lot of money. And the way we manage these funds is that we are managing a long-term plan so that we can achieve that and so that we can preserve that financial capacity. All right, so that's the greater context of this work program. Funds projects according to all of those various needs as displayed in this pie chart. So, you know, when costs go up, when one of these wedges needs to get bigger, another wedge may need to get smaller. And so there needs to be trade-offs and prioritizations sometime. If there's a desire to make major changes, we certainly can. We make changes every year with the work program process, and we make changes during the year with amendment processes. But we really do want to have feedback and guidance from the governing boards on those decisions. So we can make changes, but we ask that if you want to make major changes that you direct us to pursue a transit plan amendment. All right, so back to this work program. So we're maintaining the four key themes of the transit plan. Those are improving the current system, more projects sooner, and connecting the region with quick and reliable service and better experience at stops and stations. Related to our transparency and accountability efforts, we have a flow of information from that long-range plan to this annual budget, to a project agreement, to implementation. And now we are displaying the results of that implementation on our new Durham Transit Tracker. That website went live on Friday. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Curtis, who is going to walk you through the new Durham Transit Tracker.
Hi, everyone, my name is Curtis Garpignato, and I am a transportation planner here with Durham County. And I am very excited to share with you all the recently launched Durham Transit Tracker. The tracker tracks progress on transit plan-funded projects, including key metrics, financial status, and project status. And the idea of the tracker came from the 2023 Transit Plan and is part of our efforts towards transparency and accountability to the public. And the tracker will allow the public to better understand and follow the funded transit plan projects and see the things that the transit plan is accomplishing. And I will note that all of the data on this tracker, there's a lot of data on there, I encourage you to look at it, there's a link in your agenda material, was collected through a collaborative effort with our partners at Go Triangle, the city, and the Triangle West TPO. And it is a work in progress that we will continue to improve on and update over time. It is our plan to update the data every six months at the conclusion of the second and fourth quarter of every fiscal year. And I will show you some snippets of some of the data over the next couple of slides. But again, there's a lot of data, so please feel free to dig in in your own time too. Next slide, thank you. So this just shows some examples of the system-wide data that is available on the Transit Tracker, including such items as on-time performance, ridership, and high-level financial information. And I will highlight that the financial information you see on that right-hand pane is as of the second corridor, which is part of why not all of that funding that has been allocated has been spent. And in addition to that, for those capital project funds, those are typically multi-year projects that will take several years to fully deliver, which is another reason why you'll see the allocated funding is much higher than the expenditure. But this is just an example of some of the data that is available. Next slide. And this slide shows an example of one of the projects you can follow on the tracker. This is the Durham Bus Stop Improvement Program, which is a major project managed by Go Triangle that has so far delivered 160 completed bus stops, and you can see that in the bottom right-hand corner. This is an example of one of the project metrics you can track for this project and for other projects. There are different types of metrics available. And you can see the location of the bus stops on the map in the top right too. And there is financial information on every project in the work program available. And there's an example of that in the bottom left-hand corner. And I'll note that the number of bus stops completed on this project is actually even higher today than as of when we collected this data. But this is just an example of one of the major projects we have in the transit plan that you can follow on the tracker. And with that, I will pass it off to my colleague Brandy. And again, I encourage you all to dive into this more in your own time.
Good afternoon. So as Ellen mentioned, there have been some changes between the time the work program was released for public comment at the end of January and the final recommended work program we are presenting here today. These next few slides will provide an overview of these changes and an impact to the budget. For the bus service, Go Durham and Go Triangle both had improvements reflecting the priorities of the short-range transit plan. But these improvements are consistent with the transit plan's overall goals to expand and enhance service, increase frequency, and provide more reliable service. These improvements increased the budget by 7.6 million annually, including the $4 million increase for Go Durham's Route 4 and 9. For the bus and para-transit maintenance facilities, the major change in the final recommended work program is the deferral of the 3.75 million that was previously planned in FY26 for construction of the Fay Street Boff. Since these funds have been shifted to FY27- Since these funds have been shifted to FY '27, this is not a cost savings to the transit plan, as the funding is still programmed in the CIP, but this deferral will align the funding with the updated project schedule. There were no changes to Go Triangle's bus stop improvement program or the regional mobility hub, but there were some changes made to a few of the city's capital projects based on concerns that were shared at the February work session. We appreciate the city's efforts in reevaluating each of these projects and adjusting their requests accordingly. The Holloway Street and Junction Road projects are fully funded and have applied the federal grant funding towards the construction costs, and the Village Mobility Hub has received an increase of $800,000 in FY '26 and an additional $1 million in FY '27 for construction. There were no changes to the quick and reliable regional service, and the Bus Rapid Transit Initiative remains a priority, as the work program authorizes $6 million of new funding for the city's BRT development project, plus $434,000 annually for three new staff positions. The work program continues to fund both fair subsidy projects that were added to the FY '25 work program. These two projects, which include the city's DIME program and Go Triangle's TAP program, have had no changes since the work program was released for public comment. However, it is important to note that the staff working group approved both requests as they were submitted by the city and Go Triangle. There were two administrative staff changes made in the final work program. The first is for the Tax District Administration. Go Triangle has consolidated the Tax District Administration staff into a standalone unit based on a recent organizational study. This reorg has resulted in a $180,000 increase in the Financial Oversight Staff Project, but that is offset by the closing of the Financial Oversight Support Services Project, so the net impact to the FY '26 budget is a savings of $23,000. Durham County also increased their Staff Working Group Administration project by 29,000. This is largely due to Durham County taking over the role as lead agency for multiple tasks, including public engagement. The Staff Working Group Administrative Project Budget, which is now 100,000 annually, will account for additional staff time, translation materials, and policy development. As I just mentioned on the previous slide, Durham County will serve as the lead agency on all inter-local agreement responsibilities, except for maintaining the templates, which will continue to be led by the Tax District Administration. This revised lead agency matrix was approved by the staff working group. Now to get into the budget updates, so we had 11 budget revisions submitted during the finalization of the work program. These, these revisions reduced the budget by 6.7 million, but again, do not necessarily represent a cost savings, as most of these changes represent a deferral and not a removal of funding. Of the three projects you see on the screen now that have a $0 budget in FY '26, the Financial Oversight Support Services Project that I just mentioned is actually a true-cost savings, as this project is being closed due to, due to Go Triangle's reorg. The Junction Road project is still fully funded and will utilize carryover transit plan funding, as well as the awarded federal funding. And the Fay Street Boff, as I mentioned earlier as well, is just a deferral to FY '27. The budget revisions, again, resulted in an approximately $1 million decrease in the operating expenditures, but again, to reiterate, this decrease is due to projects starting later in the year, which will then increase costs in the upcoming year. On the capital side, the expenditures decreased by 5.6 million, and this is mainly due to project delays and aligning the funding with the revised project schedules. This slide illustrates how the budget revisions have impacted each agency. Recommended expenditures for the city have decreased. The county had a slight increase due to the increase in Staff Working Group Administration. And you will also notice that the Tax District Administration expenditures have been separated from Go Triangle since they are now a standalone unit. The transfer from fund balance has decreased, and we will now only need to transfer approximately 8.5 million from fund balance, whereas before it was 15.2 million. The final recommended work program maintains the same projected revenues as the draft work program. It is important to note that as compared to the FY '25 work program, the sales tax growth has decreased from 8% to 6%. Our financial model is maintained by the Tax District Administration and includes all of our operating and capital projects through fiscal year 2040. Fund balance is necessary, so we have the ability to fund future capital and operating projects, as well as unexpected costs that may arise throughout the fiscal year. Our adopted financial policy requires us to maintain at least $10 million in excess liquidity, and with all the changes between the draft and the final work program, the low point in our financial model did not change and still occurs in fiscal year 2035 at approximately 22 million. There are 22 projects, including the Light Rail and the commuter rail projects, that will be closed on June 30th, 2025, with the approval of the work program. All of the remaining funding will return to fund balance. Each project sponsor was asked to add cost share information on their project sheets for all projects with shared funding sources. Cost shares provide information to the boards about how projects are funded at the time of budget approval, and provide necessary information to staff who, who will be preparing and approving reimbursement requests. A standardized format for project sheets, including the cost share information, will be developed for FY '27. Public engagement, so this year, we received a lot more comments than we did for FY '25's work program, and we were very pleased with that. The information about the work program was available on the Go Forward and Durham County websites. We also had three tabling sessions that were held at Durham Station during the engagement period, and that was hosted by both Durham County and Go Triangle staff. We also advertised on Durham County's social media platforms, and residents also had an opportunity to email their comments to us. An online survey was also available on Go Forward, and it was a combination of open-ended and project-specific questions. We had 64 participants and received 49 comments. 79% of respondents said that they ride the bus at least once a week, and of that percentage, 39% rides daily. The survey also indicated that 68 and 57% of participants will be positively impacted by the proposed service changes on Go Durham Routes 4 and 9 and Go Triangle Routes 400 and 700, respectively. 74% of participants feel that the bus routes either always or mostly serve the needs of their neighborhood. 58% of participants were satisfied with the ongoing bus stop improvements that are led by Go Triangle that Curtis showed us on the trip, on the Transit Tracker earlier in the presentation. And 85% of participants felt it was important to implement Bus Rapid Transit, and 85% of participants also felt it was important to continue the support of fare-free initiatives. A full copy of the engagement report was included in the agenda materials. Lastly, I just wanted to say that the Staff Working Group Administrated, Administration recognizes the need for a new and/or improved policies and procedures to help govern the development of the work program. These policies will be developed by county staff in collaboration with the Staff Working Group, and will be forwarded to the governing boards for approval, as we continue to seek your guidance on ways to better manage this process moving forward. I will now turn the presentation over to Sean Egan.
Just want us to be mindful of time, that buzzer was, that we were at that time, so to try to get through the rest of the slides, so we have time for questions as soon as possible.
Certainly. So, good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to share these updates on the progress we're making to improve transit across Durham. Seated behind me from my team is Nisha Reynolds, who just joined us as our Bus Rapid Transit Planner. So, welcome to Nisha, and we're excited to move forward this great work. This progress is possible thanks to the funding provided through the Durham County Transit Plan, but also critical is the support from our partners at Durham County, Go Triangle, and the Triangle West TPO, and we are most grateful for this partnership. So we started out FY 2025 on a high note, welcoming USDOT Secretary Pete Buttigieg, Governor Roy Cooper, and US Representative Valerie Fushi to tour the Holloway Street Transit Corridor following the announcement of a $12 million grant to fund improvements to bus stops and pedestrian safety. We were proud to have many of our bus operators who, who deliver essential services every day participate in the event. Design of these improvements has reached the 50% level, and the additional 1.5 million in the work program will enable us to bid the project for construction in FY 2026. For, in August, we were able to launch an expansion of services across North Durham. So this was made possible by implementing a new crosstown connection on Route 6 between the Duke VA Hospital and Duke Regional Hospital, but we also restructured Routes 1, 4, and 9 in North Durham, doubling service frequency to Northern and Riverside High Schools, and laying the foundation for 15-minute service on Routes 4 and 9 in 2026. We also recognize that not every transit need can be addressed by a 40-foot bus, so we revamped Durham's microtransit system that enables users in zones to request a ride to get to and from our transit network. We developed a new model to reduce costs while still enabling first- and last-mile connections. Also, in October, we kept a close eye on ridership that has been building at a rapid pace, fueled by service increases funded by Durham County Transit, like the one implemented in August. I was hopeful that we could squeak by our previous monthly record of 617,000 trips, and when the numbers came in, I asked our staff to double and triple-check them, because we hadn't just beaten our all-time record, we smashed it with more than 650,000 trips. Throughout the fall, we worked closely with the Durham Transit Partners at the County Triangle West TPO and Go Triangle to secure the full funding needed for Durham Station, and with your support, we were able to host our groundbreaking on December 9th, and construction is now underway. We also completed testing on transit signal priority at 13 intersections on Fayetteville Street and began TSP operations. During testing, TSP enabled a significant reduction in buses running two to five minutes late, boosting on-time performance and advancing the Durham County Transit Plan goal of improved service reliability. As we continue to grow our transit services in Durham, we need more vehicles and more maintenance capacity. While both Go Durham fixed route bus and access are co-located today, that site is at capacity, so we decided to find a new site for access and repurpose the vacated space to expand our fixed route fleet. We found a good site and a willing seller, and on January 24th, we closed the deal and are now the proud owners of 12 acres that will be the future home of Go Durham Access. One of our proudest moments this year took place at the March 3rd City Council meeting, when we honored four inductees to the Million Milers, bus operators who have driven a Go Durham bus 1 million miles without a preventable collision. This feat typically takes 12 years of safe driving to complete. And if you think that's impressive, one of our operators, Tanya Burnett, who's on the far right in this photo, was recognized for 2 million safe miles over a quarter-century of service to our community. So we are so proud of our amazing bus operators. Throughout the year, we've also been working to develop and advance Durham's first Bus Rapid Transit project. The Regional FAST 2.0 Study, led by NC DOT with funding support from the Durham County Transit Plan, recommended the Central Durham Bus Rapid Transit Project, connecting from the Village and East Durham downtown into our largest employer at the Duke VA Hospital campus. We secured funding for a corridor study in November and got right to work in January, kicking off our Level 1 feasibility analysis, evaluating routing alternatives, and screening for fatal flaws. We're now at Level 2, evaluating alternatives against the Federal Transit Administration's Small Starts Criteria for Land Use and Economic Development. As we close out FY 2025, we are preparing to put forward a preferred alignment comprised of the highest-ranking segments from Level 2 that are best suited for implementation and feasibility for small starts. Funding in the 2026 program described earlier will enable us to begin project development activities and coordination with FTA in the new fiscal year. I want to thank our Staff Working Group partners who make these achievements possible, Ellen Beckman at Durham County, Doug Placinsky, who's seated behind me from Triangle West TPO, and Jay Hykes and Meg Scully at Go Triangle. We appreciate that partnership, and now with your support for the FY 2026 work program, we can keep this momentum going. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you for, I know, Ryan, you sped it up there at the end, and thank you for getting it all in. I just want to say thank you so much for all the services you all provide, really connecting our Durham residents to vital services, to education, to jobs, all the things, and thank you and pass on our congratulations to the bus drivers who reached such an amazing milestone. I want to just say, on behalf of the entire board, thank you, because I, as I mentioned, we are, we have to be quick on time. I'll pass it to the board for questions, so ask your questions. If you have comments, send them in an email thanking them. But let's just get to questions. I'll start on this side this time. Commissioner Valentine? Okay. Commissioner Jacobs? We're gonna go from this side.
Oh, okay. You didn't want to start here?
He didn't have any.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Well, first of all, great work, and I'm really, congratulations to everyone for coming together from February to now, and I appreciate all of you, everyone, working together. Are you concerned about the decrease in revenues, and is that going to impact the financial model that we have?
So we're always monitoring the decreases in revenue. I will say, what we've been noticing, and I'm sure everybody on the county and the city side are noticing, half-cent sales tax has been slightly under what is anticipated. We still think we'll probably meet our budget this year, but part of the good part of working conservatively, we work as a group, and we always evaluate these dollar amounts, so there is some conservatism already in the model. On behalf, one of the other bigger concerns Ellen mentioned was the federal grants, those kind of allocations that we look forward to helping implement these services. Tax district side, we work closely with our partners on getting those fundings, and we try to figure out ways to do it. The good part is, as Ellen mentioned, or Brandy mentioned, the low point of the current financial model is around 22 million, so there is that excess liquidity, but we're always keeping an eye on it.
Okay. And I think it just reinforces which, what I appreciate, you all revising your timeframe, because we, we just have to be realistic. And also, I appreciate this incredible structure of transparency and accountability that you've created, because we have to make sure that we are delivering these projects the best that we can and make use of all of these precious funds. Look, I did spend some time with the Transit Tracker, which is amazing, but I will say it does take time to use. I was wondering if it, if it's possible to have context around some of the things, so for instance, like the bus stops, where it says like 160, something where you, well, 160 out of how many that we said that we were going to build, or how many need to be built, like, I think that would be helpful. And then also around the spending, how we're doing on the spending, I don't know, just thinking about, like, creating context for some of that stuff, I think would be, would be helpful, is one, was one of my suggestions, but, and also, are we going to do a link to the city website and Go Triangle website on that tracker?
Well, I will start with your first question about contextualizing things. It is our intention that at the next update of the Transit Tracker with the Durham Bus Stop Improvement Program, we will collect the total completed by fiscal year, and we will compare that against the goal that is laid out in the work program. And yeah, that is, it's, it's difficult because there's a lot of data, but we're always looking for ways to improve it, and it is our intention to continue to work to do so, because there's a lot of information in there.
Okay, great, thank you. Also, I did want to raise that we had gotten a letter from Bike Durham Collective. I know I met with folks concerned about maintaining fare-free ridership for Go Durham, and I didn't know how, what was the plan to address that on the city side, just to hear, hear more about that.
Sure. So we appreciate the support expressed in the letter and recognition of the benefits that fare-free transit has. Our view is- Our view is that the best way forward to support low-income fare assistance is really, as Ellen talked about, to develop a policy that can be applied consistently to the providers in Durham County, and so rather than try to make some decisions in, at the 11th hour, we really feel like we should be taking the, the months ahead, developing that policy recommendation, working collaboratively in partnership to do that, and then bringing that back to get guidance and direction from the governing boards. So our preference is to, is to participate in that policy development approach.
Thank you, and I appreciate that long list of policies that you all are gonna work on, so, awesome, thank you. My last question is, I'm, I'm our liaison to BPAC, and it came up that we used to have a Transit Advisory Committee in the county, which we don't have anymore, like, it's been a number of years since that was disbanded, and BPAC members were asking if we could bring back some type of Transit Advisory Committee that was really made up purely of transit-dependent riders or regular transit riders, because we don't really have anything quite like that, and, you know, and even if they only met on a quarterly basis or whatever, just, I mean, it's kind of related to engagement, but on a much deeper level, and I just wanted to hear what you all, your thoughts are about that.
So for Go Durham, every other month, so the even-numbered months, we just had one in April, it's the first Wednesday of the month, we have an engagement event with our riders, and that, it's not a formal body where representatives are appointed, but we see generally the same participants, month in and month out, and we use that as an opportunity to share progress that we're making, but also to hear what's, what's going wrong with the system and to get feedback about where we can improve our system. So that forum has been a really productive opportunity for us to, to both share and hear from the community. We've invited our partners to come and share when they have new information about changes or policy proposals, and so I would encourage the BPAC folks to come to our June meeting, the first Wednesday at 5:30 PM in June, and participate in that and see if they feel like that's addressing the needs, or if that's something that they would like to participate in, because we've gotten positive feedback about it from the participants in it.
And where is that at?
It's at Durham Station.
Oh, Durham Station. That sounds great. I think one thing I would say to think about is, this actually came up because a bunch of high school students who ride the bus to school came and did some videos that were amazing, but it, it got us thinking about the different types of, you know, that may capture one group, but I think the, the advantage of an advisory committee is if you have designated types, you know, I think about our access riders, our food shuttle, now we have our on-demand East Durham, North Durham, going to the museum, going to Trayburn, so we actually have-
Commissioner Jacobs?
Okay, okay, so I'll stop, but anyway, I just encourage you to think about, how do we capture, like, the diversity of riders that we have? Thank you.
Nice to meet you, Dr. Lee.
Just, in the interest of time, I'll just send an email. There's, I just had a question about the, the slow pace of spending that, that was on the chart there. I think that's for something, for another time, it's not urgent right now, but I'm gonna send an email.
See, Commissioner Jacobs, so easy. Commissioner Burton?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for this work. It's very complex work dealing with transit. I'm learning a lot, and I'm just, and I can talk to you about this later, about bus rapid transit, and, because I'm, I'm really, I'm wanting that for Durham, especially with all the traffic and stuff, so I'll ask you later. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think, yeah, the only comment I really have is just a part of the Durham Next Project and Working Group, it's gonna be a big priority, and I shared this in the last presentation, for me, before we start, you know, constructing new projects and initiatives, figuring out the resources we have in Durham, getting people access to those resources is a priority for me, so wanting that to be at the center of the conversations of the Durham Next Working Group. So thank you all so much. And now, our next presentation is the Naming Committee request for the William V. Bill Bell space. And we have Chief of Staff Shannon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Madam Manager, Madam Attorney. I am here to represent the Naming Committee with a proposal to name the William V. Bill Bell Lobby. Just always wanted to give you a reminder of the policy, which we discussed at the last work session. It was adopted in 2016. It indicates that no entire building can be named for an individual, that the authority to name is held with you all, the board. That request are made via application, they are submitted to the board to review, and then forwarded to the Naming Committee. Applications are reviewed by the Naming Committee, and then they make a recommendation to the board, which brings us here today. The board will review and approve the recommendation or make its own recommendation, and once approved, the recommendation goes to public hearing to discuss and receive public comments. Following public hearing, the board will then vote on the naming or renaming. These are our Naming Committee members. We have Deborah Craig Ray, Julio Delgado, Kathy Everett Perry, myself, Monica Wallace, and Larissa Williamson. And so we received a request to name the William V. Bill Bell Lobby. The original application was received in October 23, and it was actually to name the Durham Convention Center in honor of William Bell. After discussion about the policy and the limitations in the policy, a revised application was received in August 24 to name the William Bill, William Bell Lobby, which is located on the second floor of Admin 1, between the Innovation Lab and the Clerk's Office. It's where we typically have receptions and events, that is the, the lobby area. The request was submitted by Kristen Bell, daughter of William Bell, and in honor of William V. Bell's service as Durham County Commissioner from 1972 to 1994, as Chair of the Board from 1982 to 1994, and again, in 1996, 2000, we received this request. I do want to note that when you come off the elevator on the second floor, there is already a recognition of him as being a member of the Board, and there's a marker right outside the elevator, if you haven't noticed that. So if the recommend, if the recommendation is approved, it is our intent that we will have William V. Bell Lobby will hang, I'm sorry, that should say William V. Bill Bell Lobby, will hang above the photo, like the Commissioner photos that are here, and like we've done previously with our namings, it will hang in the lobby with a brass plaque that would be mounted beneath, giving the dates of service. Here are some options of where that could go. We have option one, is that when you first exit this, this, the chambers, and you go into the lobby, there is a window that's directly in front of you, it could hang to the left or the right of there. If, when you go into the lobby, if you look to your right, there's a corner right beside the Innovation Lab, we could hang the plaque there, and in the center of the space, there is a column, we could hang it there. So these are three options for that lobby space. Our next steps following this discussion would be a public hearing to be held on May 27, 2025. We set it for May 27 because we do have to post that for 10 days and allow that to be out there, so we, that's why it's not set for the following Monday, and it's set for May 27. After public hearing, the B O C C will do their final vote at that meeting, and if approved, we will then schedule an unveiling event that will be held on a date and time to be And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you so much, Shannon, and thank you so much to the entire Naming Committee for the work that you all do in looking into all of our policies and making sure that we honor folks in the best way possible here at the county, and we were able to do this with, Attorney Seiler was the last individual that we were able to name the lobby of our Admin 1 building. Admin 2, we are in Admin 1. I see Commissioner Burton's hands.
Yes, thank you so much. I have a question, and it's probably the question for Commissioner Jacobs, because I noticed the policy was created in August of 2016, and I wanted to get more clarification as to why that policy was made.
So there was a lot of discussion at that time, creating the policy, I mean, it was 2016, so I can't tell you everything exactly, but from what I remember, there was, and I don't remember what, I think it was around the Memorial Stadium, right, there was, there was a proposal to rename the Durham County Memorial Stadium after somebody, and so that was, it, it, that's what launched kind of an in-depth discussion, also looking at all the issues, looking at how, you know, other governments do this, whatnot. And so some of the issues that came up were, number one was, well, some of, some of the issues that I remember that were discussed were that it was important that county buildings reflect in their title what their purpose is, and that was something that had been consistent in Durham County, that in recent past, all of our buildings very clearly state the purpose of what they are for the community, also the fact that buildings are, belong to the people of Durham and have been purchased with taxpayer dollars, so we, we have, most of our buildings, that are county buildings, reflect the purpose, Main Library, North Regional Health and Human Services, Admin 1, Admin 2. Also, you know, there are some, like Bragg Town Library is a historic, and also Sanford El Warren are historic, but in recent times, the buildings have all been reflective of their purpose, Durham County Cooperative Extension, whatnot. Also, there was the idea that there are times when buildings and things get named after people, and then later on, there are issues with those people, you know, we've seen that with Confederate situations, right, in recent past. And then also, the idea was that politics should not be a part in naming buildings, that they, and that the naming, that we needed to have a very clear naming process that was as equitable and fair as possible, recognizing that we want to make sure that people can be recognized in our community for their contributions. So for example, we recently had a room in Cooperative Extension named after Mr. Hodges, who, you know, not an elected official, but somebody who had made huge contributions, things like that. So in other words, we wanted to make it a non-political process, and that's why we created a very clear process, and also really leaving it to a staff-driven process, leaving it to the staff to make recommendations around appropriate locations, and we've moved away, since I'm the county commissioner, we have tried to take the politics as much out of decision-making, so for example, our nonprofit funding process used to be decided by commissioners, now it's based on staff recommendations. Our public art policy used to be, we would review these projects, now it's totally staff-driven. The ARPA funding, again, staff rubric and decision-making process, and so I'm really proud of the policies that we have in Durham County government. I think it makes for good decision-making and good governance, and also I think that it creates public trust in government. So that's just the context, I guess, for that development of this policy, and then also recognizing, I know there was a reference here to, like, the Civic Center, that's a good example of a building that you want to have, the Durham Civic Center, very important for marketing, for whatnot, and also a building like that, there is the opportunity for private investments, which you see, like, with stadiums, like, and arenas, or even with DPAC, it's still the Durham Performing Arts Center, but people can purchase the naming rights, companies for the stage, or the club, different things like that, and so that's another important thing to think about as well, so.
Thank you for that answer, and I'm just gonna put it out there, there are people in the community who want a county building named after Commissioner Mayor Bill Bell, and the reason is because of all the things he's done for Durham County, and I know that that's the discretion of the board, but community members have come to me about wanting something named after him, that's a county building to remember what he's done for Durham County and the city of Durham. He's made a really big contribution to what we're doing here, and one of the things that I know we're gonna discuss, but I wanted to put that out there, it's come to my attention and maybe others, about naming a building after Mayor Bell, and I'm glad you pointed out that his name is in the lobby already, and sometimes I wonder how many people pay attention to things like that, so, but we can have the discussion. Thank you.
I'll add, he's, he's here too. We have his portrait up here in, in, in the chambers. Thank you.
Commissioner Valentine or Commissioner, I know Commissioner Jacobs, just, but Commissioner Valentine, do you have questions?
I don't have questions.
All right, if you have comments, yeah?
Yes. Thank you. I tried to speed up the last by not providing a comment, maybe I should have. So when I requested that we entertain consideration that Mayor Bell be honored by naming a building after him, is actually what my request was, for his lifetime of service to Durham, it was not my intent to bring back, to bring back a previous consideration. The previous board had the ability to take action on that request, and they chose not to at that time. And so my plea today is actually to all of my colleagues here on the DIAS, and I am asking that members of this board take up the issue of naming a building in the county in honor of Mayor Bill Bell, anew, in the law we call that de novo. There's been discussions about the need for changing the existing policy, and to the extent that that argument has merit, it would be my request that we consider an exception to the naming policy. On the other hand, the present naming request is coming from members of this board, I would put my name amongst that list, and the current policy, in my reading and understanding, doesn't seem to contemplate a request coming from members of the board. And so I believe Mayor Bell's lifetime of service to our community is what I described previously as extraordinary. I won't recapitulate, in the interest of time, all of the accomplishments, but I think it goes without saying that Mayor Bell stood in the gap on many issues in both the city and the county for a cross-section of our residents, Durham, Durham County's most difficult times over the last 50 years. He was also at the tip of the spear, along with others, in paving the way for Durham to be one of North Carolina's best destinations for the arts and entertainment. I dare say that Mayor Bell had a vision for the 21st century, far ahead of many in our nation, and so his commitment and contributions to the city and the county are more than noteworthy, and for these reasons, I'll be asking my colleagues here on the DIAS to join me in naming a building after the Honorable William V. Bill Bell, and I'm hoping, I'm hoping that- And I'm hoping, I'm hoping that she'll join me in this effort. Lastly, I will join the comments made by my esteemed colleague, my sister in service, as I refer to out in the community. Yes, there is a call in our community for a naming of a building in honor of Bill Bell. And there's also been some discussion about the school board taking this matter up. And so it's my understanding that the school board actually has tabled this discussion indefinitely. But to the extent that they're part of this conversation, quite frankly, I'm hoping that the city and the school board join us in this effort in naming a building after William V. Bill Bell. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Valentine. Yeah, and for historical reference, in the last, previous board, the goal was that the city, county, because the requests were submitted to all three bodies, the city, county, and DPS were supposed to meet with staff to kind of figure out, like, how can we all three recognize the amazing service that Mayor Bell has provided to Durham County, even though he's been a commissioner and mayor, but he also obviously had a great impact on our schools through the merging of the city and the county schools. So that's why DPS was put into that. And then the city did decide to have the Bill Bell Way across from D-PAC, and then, so the boards kind of started figuring out individually now, okay, since the city took a step to go individually of what we would do. I personally, I completely agree on all, I don't think anyone here would ever discount the amazing ways that Mayor, Commissioner, Chair Bill Bell has served Durham County. I think, you know, going back to the historical reference and information that Commissioner Jacobs brings about why we have this policy in place, I personally would be very supportive of, you know, naming a space like the lobby. And I think if you walk into Admin Two and see the way that we've been able to put Attorney Seiler at the front and center of a space, as soon as you walk in, it's something you look and recognize. And I see residents all the time walking by the portrait and reading the plaque, learning about Attorney Seiler and his service, of making sure, like, if we went down that path of doing the lobby, of making that plaque something that stops people in their steps to take a moment to recognize and read about Mayor Bill Bell and his service to Durham County. I'll come to you, back to you, Commissioner Burton, because I know Vice Chair Lee had to step away, but he had, you had told me you wanted to speak to.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, so I apologize, I had to step out for a call, just a really quick call. So here's where I am on this, and I've spoken to, I think, most everyone on there, and I'm going to repeat it, but I also have kind of a statement here at the end. So I, I support and recognize and honor Mayor Bell, right, for, for everything. We have a really good working, we, we've had a really good working relationship. I remember introducing my kids to him at the Duke football game, and they were just so enamored by him. His leadership means a lot to Durham, not just Durham County, but Durham in general. His name is probably the most recognizable name, I think, of all those who've served in, in various boards. My concern, my initial concern with this was the three-pronged approach of having the city do something, having the county do something, and having the school system do something. And I said that from the beginning. I don't, I did not support the name of three individual things for Mayor Bell. He was very important to the city, but I just think that was a bit much. There's been questions, and there's been proposals on the school side. There's been a, I wouldn't necessarily call it a pressure campaign, but just a lot of outreach to the board members to do something. And they were initially going to do the Old Northern High School site. That was, that was going to show up, but it didn't, it didn't hit the agenda for whatever reason. The next proposal was to, for Fuller, for the Fuller Building, to be renamed. And at that point, I was still, I'm not, I'm telling you, I'm just not supportive of three items, three places here, in any respect, for Mayor Bill Bell. So as of, you know, maybe a couple days ago, there's still whispers about doing something later in the school system, you know, later on. That gives me pause. That, that gives me pause. I even heard a thing about the possibility, if there was a new convention center, well, I believe there will be at some point, new convention center for it to take, take on that name as well. I don't, again, that gives me pause. With that, with, with the way the application is, with the lobby, I can support that. However, if, if, if there's a continuance of the, the campaigns for other buildings or so forth, you know, that's going, if I can't get reassurance that those kinds, those things are stopping or halting, I can't support, I can't support it. However, I would love to have conversations about it. No one has really reached out to me directly, except my colleagues here, about this. And I would say the same thing. I need some reassurance that there's not going to be, if we were to name something, a building or a lobby after Mayor Bell, that there wouldn't be a concerted effort afterwards to start up conversations about the convention center, civic center, or a school building. I would need those kind of, those kind of reassurances. Lastly, I'll say, and I'm pretty sure whoever this is is watching, I'm sure they have interest. I've done this for a little while. You know, I've served publicly on another board. And I don't govern by intimidation. I don't. I'm secure in who I am, I'm secure in my leadership abilities. And the threat of ending a political career over a vote does not move me. I'm here because I want to be here, it's not because I need to be here. This is a part-time thing for me. This is me serving my community. If I am not an elected official, I'm still alive, I'm still successful. So threatening me to do this by making me supposedly, making me an example, ruining my career, my political career, does not move me. You can go back to my school board days to realize that I don't get moved by that stuff. So your continuous emails and your continuous threats may have done the opposite for you. I'm not looking at anyone in particular, because I don't think anyone in here was involved with that. That kind of campaign only makes your side worse. And if I continue to get those sorts of messages, I will vote it down. It doesn't bother me. So if you're listening, if you're hearing this, you're not doing yourself any favor, because you won't move Mike Lee through intimidation. I don't work like that. I'm not afraid of votes. I don't make votes for votes. I'm not paid, I'm not obligated by anybody. So this comes to a vote on the 27th, and what I need is assurances that there's not going to be continued campaigns to create other buildings or spaces named for Mayor Bell before I can support naming anything. That's all I needed to say.
Thank you for that, Vice Chair Lee. I just wanted to say that, you know, I hear you, Commissioner Jacobs, about, you know, Mayor Bell's pictures on the wall. But one thing that I know is about, when, as time moves on, people's collective memory disappears. And as Durham continues to change, as new people continue to come, they forget, they I started my career in Durham Public Schools in 1994, two years after merger. And I remember going through that whole entire year trying to make sense of what was happening about parents when I worked at Hillendale, and parents not wanting to send their children to Watts. Or when I was at Southwest, and parents boldly said, well, if we go through this, you know, moving of lines, I'm moving to Wake County. And I realized that, that vote that that commission made was a very, very brave vote. So for me, and I totally understand what you're saying, Dr. Lee, for me, it's about how do we remember someone's memory as Durham continues to change and remember history? And I agree with you, we don't need three things named after Bill Bell, right? So what I would like is for all of us, you know, to talk about this, maybe table this, and have discussions about what we all want to do as a community, because I do agree with you, we don't need three things named after Bill Bell. But I also know that people tend not to look at, they'll look at a picture, you know, and I see how many people come into Admin One. It's not like the number of people that used to come in here when the tax office was here or what have you. So for me, it's about remembering history, collective memory, and making sure that, you know, we're honoring things that happened from a historical lens. So this is what it's about. But we can talk about it more, and we can table this if need be.
Commissioner Jacobs?
Thank you. So I appreciate everyone's sharing heartfelt comments. I will just say, first of all, absolutely, Bill Bell is a transformational leader in our community. Durham would not be the place that it is today without him. I support the proposal that is before us. The, our lobby is, outside of the chambers, is the most important space for the Board of County Commissioners, and that is a beautiful historic space. That's where we have all of our receptions, our celebrations. It, that is our public living room space. It's a beautiful historic space, and I think that's very appropriate. I did want to just address, in the proposed locations for the portrait, I don't think, I didn't like the column. That was the one location I didn't really like. I also kind of questioned that space next to the, kind of in the corner, going into the strategic, I, I kind of didn't, I, I was going to suggest another location, so either, to me, prominent is like going down the stairs, right? That's prominent. Or actually, the other direction on either side of the glass doors, coming this way. Right now, there is just, all there is, is a, and I don't know, maybe it's not big enough there? Did you guys look at that? It's not big enough? Okay, forget it. All right, so I mean, to me, then, the most prominent would be, you know, going down the stairs, I think. So I just wanted, that was just my only input. I think that it is very important that we do not have exceptions to our policies. I believe very strongly that this is an important policy that we respect, and also our other policies as well. And I do think, you know, the city has done the street naming. I don't know what the schools might do, but this, I do think that this is a very beautiful way to honor Mayor Bell. And I do want to also lift up that there are, when I look at the wall, you know, there are county commissioners who have made significant contributions to Durham County government as well, and I, and our entire county, that I don't also want to just ignore. You know, people like Becky Heron and Ellen Recau, who served for over 30 years as county commissioners. And, you know, when I think about Becky, she founded, you know, the animal shelter, stadium of our, I mean, the stadium, our senior center. You know, Ellen is really responsible for the county's commitment to early childhood and pre-K, East Durham Children's Initiative, our transit planning, you know, our water protection areas in North Durham. So I'm just, I'm just putting it out there to say that this is why this is very difficult, because I, people in Durham make amazing contributions. We have an amazing community of elected leadership and also citizen leadership, and that's why I'm glad that our policy recognizes ordinary people. You know, Willie Bradshaw, the field at Memorial Stadium is named after him, historic hillside coach. So I want to make sure that we are lifting up, you know, everyone in our community with our naming policy. And again, I support the staff recommendation. So, thank you all.
Okay, Commissioner Valentine?
Yes. Vice Chair Lee, thank you for your comments. Your, your comments, I might add, have been consistent with the things that we have talked And when, when you were out of the, the room, I had mentioned that, in fact, the school board was entertaining at one time, the possibilities of doing something on behalf of Mayor Bell. It's my understanding that, that opportunity no longer exists. We can run that to ground, and I can appreciate that, and that's the very issue that, that gives you pause. And so I'm hoping that we can run that to ground and not delay this process. I think that us voting up or down on this issue is important. And so I'm hoping that we can do that on the 27th. And lastly, with respect to the, the application that was put in, I think we have the applicant here today. I was wondering if we can give her an opportunity to speak.
We can, we can ask a little, yeah, we could do that, yeah. But if you wouldn't mind, come with Ms. Bell. But as she's coming up here, oh, I understand that it was, for the school board, it was, it is technically off consideration right now. However, after speaking to a few people, the idea is not dead, just, just so you know.
Understood.
The idea is not dead, and I just need to make sure.
Understood.
Of that. And like you said, that, I've said that from the beginning.
Absolutely.
Hi, I'm Dr. Christian Belladere. Yes, my father is the former mayor, William V. Bill Bell. I proposed this option, and I am the one who advocated strongly and still will advocate for my father's legacy, because it is rare that you have someone, and I hope all of you all, after you've served 40, 50-plus years, and continue to serve in your 80s, Durham, that you have someone fighting for you, for your legacy to be known. Most people only serve 20, 10, 5, one term. But my dad has served before I was born and continues to serve. And so that, coming into Durham, as Durham continues to change... to serve. And so that, coming into Durham, as Durham continues to change and evolve, I was hoping that this process would have been easier. I like, thought that it would have been easier, but it has been a struggle. Sadly to me, because as a servant myself, I think when you give to your community, you don't do it because you're being, wanting to be praised or wanting to be acknowledged. You do it because it's right. And you know that there are people who can't do it, and you're fighting for them. And so to have such a struggle to get something named after my father in terms of a building, so that when people who don't know about Durham, or people who moved to Durham, come to Durham and don't know about the history of Durham, they would know, oh, this must have been someone important because this building is named after him. Somewhere where people don't have to come into an actual building in order to, because not, a lot of people might necessarily come in here to actually learn about his legacy. And I just was confused because I saw so many other buildings that were named after people. And I understand that there might be money given to get those names up there. But I don't think that that should always have to be the case for someone who served their life in order to have a building named after them. So I hope that you all do take it into consideration. I think it's very unique, the things, I know Ellen, I know all of the people who worked with my dad, and I don't diminish anything that anyone has done. And even people who served one term, you know, that's the awesome thing, because you've given of your life for that period of time and made a contribution. But I do hope that you all take it into consideration. The lobby, anything is wonderful. But I would hope if you could make an exception and take that into consideration, a building that is what I would love to see for my dad. Because I feel like he's given his life and continues to give his life to Durham. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, oh, I'm sorry. Michelle?
Um, thank you, Dr. Bell, for that. Appreciate it. Again, I would like for us to table this discussion. So we can talk with people, with the schools, things like that. I don't think of a lobby. I mean, I hear you, Commissioner Jacobs. Most people don't, I don't think they pay attention that closely to a lobby. I mean, I know you're saying, yes, it's beautiful, things like that. But I would like to have this discussion further. Again, for me, it's not about being, you know, threatened or anything. It's about how do we place collective memory when we have people in our community forgetting. And going back to the picture, I brought a friend up here. She wanted to see my office. And I walked back there and showed her the pictures. And when I got to, Commissioner Bell, Mayor Bell, they were like, oh, I know who he is, but I'm not sure. Because people are forgetting. They're forgetting. So I would rather us have this discussion further with the school board, whoever, and, you know, make a decision afterwards.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you. So this will appear on the 27th meeting, meeting on the 27th? I actually think I'm out that week. Can, can it happen on the 21st? Or 28th?
We're required to advertise for 10 days.
10 days.
And so.
So the next meeting is actually only in seven days because it will be our Monday regular session. And so then the following one would be the 27th.
Okay. All right. Let, let, okay, we'll figure it out. We'll, we'll figure it out.
Vice Chair, are you making a proposal that we vote at the next meeting in which you'll be available?
Yes. But let me, let me, let me double check that.
Vice Chair, that is also the Tuesday, not the Monday, because the Monday is a holiday.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. I have to travel on the, on that Monday. Is there a virtual option? Am I, I can't vote virtually, right?
You can't vote virtually.
Okay. All right. We'll, we'll work out the schedule of that. I do apologize, but I'll be out of town.
Okay.
For work. All right. Okay. So the next item on our agenda is County Commissioner directives. We have 15 minutes.
All right. I forwarded to everyone a link to the directives. And so if you will refresh, if you already have checked that, you may want to refresh. I'm sure there may be some additional updates that you may not have seen on Friday. And if you have any questions or comments, I'm happy to entertain those.
And Commissioner Jacobs?
I'm sorry. Jacob, Commissioner Jacobs?
I just have a question. I looked through it. And I think what would be helpful is if, if we could get the ones highlighted somehow in a color that.
That sticks out.
Actually haven't been.
Okay.
Followed up with yet. Because, and there are also, sometimes there were dates which we've actually passed, and we haven't done them. And, you know, that kind of thing. So I think it would be helpful to, and I don't know, even to maybe remove the ones that have been done or have them on a, I don't know. You know what I mean? It can be kind of overwhelming when you look at it.
Yeah. So we can revisit how it's framed because I know many years ago, we took off the items that were completed.
Right.
And then folks wanted to make sure they had a record of it.
Right.
So we'll, we will resend it out to everybody. And we will color code it so that it's clear which items that are.
Done, and then which are still.
Yes, that's great. And so we'll, we'll send it out and follow up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And just for, just for clarification, that's just kind of an ongoing list of.
Yes.
Things that we ask the staff.
Yes.
For information on.
And the items that are on this list come directly from the amendments. So when you approve the amendments on the regular session, then we add those, where it says staff directive, that's how the clerk's office notes it, then we add that to this. And sometimes we'll come in and you may say, I want to add something else to this directive. I don't think I caught.
Okay.
We'll add in there.
Okay, that's good. All right. Okay, I appreciate that. Any further comments about the directives? Thank you, Ms. Shannon. Appreciate that. All right. The next item on our agenda is a closed session. It is for pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A1. I'll accept the motion to go into closed session for the reasons stated.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we go into closed session for the reasons stated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please use the same sign. All right, we're in closed session. All right, we've been voted to go back in, we've been voted to go back into open session. We are now in open session. Next item on our agenda is adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. We adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please use the same sign. We are adjourned.